Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is February 15, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Today, I'd like to remember our first responders and our military men and women who serve around our country and throughout the world. Also, let's have a moment of silence in addition to that to Chief Diggs from the Fort Myers Police Department who passed away today. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to recall, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Or do we have a motion to adopt the agendas presented?
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to move addendum item nine C two, City Manager's Employment, to directly follow item seven, Approval of Minutes.
Okay. Any other changes? And we're going to move that till when?
Just following the items.
Approval of Minutes. Okay. Any other changes? Do we have a motion with that, with that change?
Motion to accept revision.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosdine.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of January 25, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting of February 1, 2023?
Motion to approve with one revision. It was stated in the minutes that the city manager received a score of 3.4. He actually received a score of 3.8, and I'd like to make that change in the minutes.
Okay. Any other changes?
Are we able to, are we able to have that verified by a member of staff?
Yes.
Not questioning it, just want to make sure that...
It's been verified.
Okay. Second.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of February 1, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item nine C two, City Manager's Employment brought forward by Councilmember Long, and I'll turn the floor over to you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so short and sweet. In light of the recent events, I believe it's in the best interest of this organization that I make a motion to elect our contractual option to terminate the employment of our city manager, Rob Hernandez, without cause effective immediately.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any council discussion? Councilmember Hayden.
Well, I think for the new council members and for the audience, we need to explain a little bit, Councilmember Long, if you want to do that, of terminating without cause, what that means.
I think at this point in time, the discussion would not be in the best interest of the organization, so I don't have anything further to say other than the motion that was presented.
Well, according to the contract, without cause means...
Without cause means... City Attorney, would you care to elaborate as to what that means pursuant to the contract?
Termit- termination without cause, basically, it's self-explanatory. It means terminating the city manager's employment, not for cause, where you would identify the cause or the things that you believe he's done that you're unhappy with or anything like that, and would identify that, and then he would be able to invoke a right to a hearing. This is a situation where the city council, the motion would be to terminate him without cause, which means there is no cause needed, and it would be, of course, upon the severance pay identified in his contract, which I believe was 20 weeks.
Well, I guess that's...
And he would also get his un- his accrued leave.
Guess that's what I was getting at. It's 20 weeks of pay.
Yeah, that's in the contract. Yes, sir.
Yep. Base pay, too.
So I just wanted to make sure that the public understood what was happening in that area. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Nay.
Cosdine.
No.
Cummings.
Aye.
That's five ayes and three nays. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and Assistant Madam City Manager, you'll take over once we reconvene.[412.81]
Soil erosion, to keep chemicals out and even litter. These photos are between Southwest Eighth Place and Southwest Eighth Court. And you can see there's virtually no vegetation left. So I'm respectfully asking the city to advise the contractors to please be respectful of the habitat of our birds and wildlife and the health of our canals as we're cleaning up debris. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Jim Ernest. I live on Southeast Twenty-Seven Street, and I've lived there since 1997, and I've lived in the Cape since 1986. I've come here to bring to your attention that there's a residence at 1428 Southeast Twenty-Seven Street. Code enforcement has been trying very hard for many years to get this resident to remove his extra vehicles, his machinery, cranes on large trucks, and abandoned vehicle, which at one time was used for storage, didn't have plates on it, was parked in the church parking lot, it doesn't run, and they finally put Jersey plates on it because code enforcement was complaining. If you would like to see next to your house, how would you like this next to your house? You will see stump removal machines, large trucks with large rubbish containers full of stumps, large tree limbs, and other rubbish from tree removal equipment. Currently there are large sections of wood fences and paid dark dirt on the ground. One or two years ago, code enforcement had the situation settled to the point where these people relocated for a couple of months. They're back. Excuse me. Code enforcement does ticket the vehicles, the owners just walk out and tear them off. Police department puts some tickets on it, they go out and they tear them up. Why is the city so disinterested in this situation? That's what I bring to you tonight. I have been contacted by code enforcement, the police department, and most recently with St. Andrews Church. They've been trying to get the vehicles out of this vacant lot across from the residence they are using church property for years without any respect for the church or the kids that come out of the school. It's over time for the city to take a look at this and get something done. It does not only does it cause a traffic danger at this corner, like I said, with the kids and everything. People come down the street, Southeast Twenty-Seven Street. I also call the police department because they have to go over 30 miles an hour. If any of you are curious about the looks of this place, I welcome you to come out and see for yourself later in the day. The best time to observe this situation is anytime after dark. Vehicles show up around 7:00 PM, and they're later in the night. You should also be aware that this vacant lot has about 13, anywhere from eight to 12 burrowing owls. Today's the first day for burrowing owls to start doing their thing. I think it's time that somebody do something about this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've got to keep your applause down. This is a professional meeting. No applause, please.
Hello, Mayor and City Council, Cheryl Anderson, president of the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust and Board of Directors on the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. And I'm here again to address the canal destruction that's going on in the Cape as we speak. What we asked last week was that we could have a list of the addresses where the contractors are working so that we may be able to go out there and monitor what's going on. We've been told we have to have pictures, right, of what's going on, and help the monitors that are there to decide where the burrowing owl and gopher tortoises are. Nobody knows more about burrowing owl and gopher tortoises than the 20 years' experience of the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. We also have maps, and there was supposed to be a training session this week, and I'm wondering, was there a training session? Were the monitors given the maps which show where owls and tortoises are? As I mentioned last week, these are wild animals, and they move. Well, guess why they're moving now? Because their homes are being destroyed. The animals are on the move right now, but at least we have GPS coordinates of where the animals have been in the past. So I would ask that, I would request that we get the addresses of where the contractors are working. I refuse to believe that we don't have addresses. I believe that the contractors that work today know exactly what addresses they're going to tomorrow, and we would like to have those addresses so we could assist in saving the wildlife and the wildlife habitat that is being needlessly destroyed. One point was mentioned by the last speaker. Today is February 15th. This is the start of burrowing owl nesting season. All the rules change. Everything changes. Thirty-three feet is what is required distance for any earth-moving trucks, track hoe equipment, 33 feet and habitat destruction. And as Alicia said, the city has no permits to invade these spaces. The city has no permits that say they can, they cannot follow the laws regarding burrowing owls. Now, here's a good example. This picture was taken on our wildlife preserve on Friday, and I don't know how well you can see it, but Michelle's left foot is on the tire tracks, and her right foot is less than three feet from a huge gopher tortoise burrow, one this big, not marked, but unmarked ones are protected just like marked ones on. So there's a nice violation on conservation property. We have three-foot signs in front of the property that say this is conservation property, and yet they still drove the trucks right next to, 25 feet is the rule for gopher tortoises. So everything changes, and there should be an email go out to all of the contractors. It's now 33 feet today for a violation. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, I'm not going to ask again. Keep your applause to yourself.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Lou Navarro, 49-year resident, Cape Coral, and your advocate. I see our next taxpayer waste is to hire a new city manager and a deputy city attorney. I guess you don't care how much money you spend. Press releases from the Breezen News Press say you want a high-quality city manager. C+ is unacceptable. Mayor and council, when you point a finger at someone for pointing back at you, you and council are rated by me to have a C. Look at my last presentation in December. You've accomplished nothing in the golf courses forever. I expect you and city council who are making close to a starting teacher's salary to be high quality. You get cost of living increases that no one else in our city employees' rank and file get. All of you must share the blame. Historically, the mayor is the city manager, but the task got so big, we hire city managers to do day-to-day business options. Unincorporate, and we'll save money with dual taxation. I really think we should. Let's do away with code enforcement, and we can be like Lee Highakers. Anything goes. Let's not blame, let's not blame Mr. Hernandez for all our misgivings. He is even blamed for neglect of burrowing owls. I'm surprised. Council, you neglected my Bald Cypress Tree presentation last year. You didn't even make a comment, and you know it. Give council, I wanted you to give Mr. Hernandez one more year. He has your list, you have my list, and let's see what gets done. We are having city managers like the Lee County School Board. They have a superintendent every four years. Waste of money and personnel. Where are you with the piles of trees laying on vacant lots that can burn and are going to run our underpaid fire department people ragged in the dry season? Use our taxpayers' dollars to help recover from hurricane Ian? You all aren't concerned. You want to get boat trailers, you want to fire the city manager, which I guess you already did. You know, our insurance is hurting, we are hurting, you've ignored the repealing the tax with LCEC, you've ignored everything. And by the way, they raised us $3 a month now for their administrative costs. What happened to just cause? I guess you terminated that gentleman without it. But remember, I have my constitution, and I've been meaning to give you all of it, counsel. Bought them from the Trump shop in Miami. I never heard of no input from the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Navarro.
Shame on you. Hal's my Vietnam buddy. Hal, raise your hand. He's, yep, he's going to be my assistant. Goodbye.
My name is Carol Yule. I live on Southwest Eighth Court in Cape Coral. By profession, I'm a natural resource professional, having spent my entire career in the fields of forestry and wildlife management and water quality protection. I have had considerable experience in dealing with water quality issues and implementing best management practices to correct them. My comments focus on the impact the Cape Coral Canal Debris Cleanup activities probably have on water quality, our public health, and our economic well-being. Extensive removal of vegetation and the upheaval of roots and exposure of raw soil along the sides of the canal will, in my opinion, negatively impact the quality of our waterways. Run-off and erosion of exposed soil and woody debris will carry sediment and organic materials into the canals along with other potential pollutants, including nutrients, pesticides, and contaminants such as petroleum products. This will result in the filling, more filling of our waterways, and the deterioration of water quality in both the freshwater and brackish water canals. As soil and debris decompose in the waterways, this can lead to several factors. Can lead to an increase in turbidity and tannins affecting plant photosynthesis. It can lead to a decrease in dissolved oxygen, which can negatively affect fish and plant life, and can increase potential algae blooms, which negatively affect public health. There really is an urgent need to protect the riparian buffer strips along our canal and to also remediate those areas, important, important, remediate those areas that have been heavily disturbed. We can't wait on this. Again, the key point, vegetated buffer strips, reduce overland flow, absorb rainfall and pollutants, provide wildlife habitat. Yes, I'm a member of Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, and help protect water quality by reducing sedimentation. The best management practices to remediate all the already disturbed areas might include, for example, installation of temporary self-fencing or hay bales along the waterways, placement of temporary protective coverings over exposed areas, seeding, and installation of plantings. I don't think this is impossible to accomplish, especially if we got landowners' help on this. In conclusion, we can't afford to jeopardize the very water resources that are so vital to our health and economic well-being in addition to our wildlife. There's a need really here to work cooperatively. I believe in cooperative work with all parties concerned, including landowners, to help resolve this issue. We need to sit down, talk about it, and lay out a plan that we can agree to. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Joanne Gruber. I live in the southwest Cape. I am a member of the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife and the Cape Coral Wildlife Trust. Last week, we asked the council to discontinue the clearing of the empty lot until the debris removal program could be done in a manner that respects both the wildlife and other environmental issues, especially our owls and our tortoises and our birds. That request wasn't honored. So I wanted to clarify. We're not asking that you cancel the program and there's no further debris canceled. We're just asking that each parcel be walked and studied before it's bulldozed and cleared. We're not asking to leave the canals as-is. They're a navigation hazard. We understand that. We're just asking for a little bit of foresight in considering what we're doing and the amount of, which Carol just said, nutrient runoff and erosion that's going to happen once the rainy season hits. All the vegetation will be gone. So we're the friends of wildlife. We're the tree huggers, right? We don't want to spend our time coming to city council meetings. We don't want to spend our time talking to the press about an unpleasant, unpleasant, unpleasant issue. We have a burrowing owl festival in under two weeks. We're all really busy. Mr. Mayor and council, you have the power to end this. Use that power, use it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Judy Mitchell, and I'm a resident of Cape Coral. You have heard much outcry from the citizens you represent regarding the destruction of habitat and greenery along our canal systems. True, you have permits to do this destruction, however, it appears to be out of control. Work is creating havoc and death among our wildlife that live near our canals and in the access areas to those canals. It is truly upsetting to many of us to see the out-of-control handling of this cleanup. You are responsible to your citizens. You are responsible for the employees in our city, and you are responsible for the actions of our employees. Shame on you for allowing this to have started without proper controls and the sad and deplorable condition that it has now created. And if you didn't know that this was happening until recently, then shame on you even now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor and council, I'm Jim Collier, and I have a couple of photographs that I want to introduce. This is mostly a before-and-after picture of Ms. Castillo-Yo Haslam. I believe this is the canal next to Ms. Leather's home, and you can see on the other side of the canal that there's not much vegetation left and pretty well scraped. Can we have the next photo, please? This is a before picture of some property, I believe that's kind of under construction, and this is the after picture. So you get a good idea of what's really left after these folks leave. The, and then we have one small picture, do we not? Oh, okay, that one's already been seen. The cover letter for the permit for this work says that the permittee shall have available, thank you, ma'am, the, and available and maintained for review a copy of this permit and approved plans at the construction site. When you see these pictures, I think it would be unreasonable for any person interested in this to try to approach these machines and ask to look at their permit. Some of these crews have a spotter, some don't. Surely in today's world, we have a way to make this information available to Friends of Wildlife so they could maybe assist these monitors and keep everybody away from the burrowing owls, gopher tortoises, other wildlife that's out there, and maybe save some of the heartache that's going on between all of the parties right now. Second issue I have is I want to congratulate the city for participating in the aggressive driving enforcement program that the police department has undertaken. I think that the hurricane affected all of us, and we had some Wild West-type situations here immediately after the storm, and especially with regard to driving when the traffic lights were out. I've seen more red light running in the last two years and in the 20 years that Cheryl and I have lived here. I would really like to cut down on that before I become a victim, and I appreciate the city enforcing that. I was a municipal prosecutor part-time for 12 years, and so that's kind of an idea that's near and dear to my heart, not being, not using the city ticketing system for profit, but for using it for contact with citizens. You want to prevent a problem before you really have one and get a handle on it. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Joyce Chambliss. Each of you should have a map of the area in question. We live on Third Terrace, which is just behind the boat ramp off of Burnt Store Road. Since 19, well, 2008, we have had a neighborhood group, which, we have a directory, we have two picnics a year, we have garage sales each year, and we have even find lost dogs when they're not, when they've escaped. Unfortunately, in two, well, two years ago, after COVID, we could not have our block party. Then last year, when we got ready to have a block party, we were amazed at the new instructions for special events. We don't consider ourselves special events like the Red White and Boom, the Arts Festival, et cetera, but we found that in the applications was $40, barricades were going to be $55. Our insurance for just a small block party was going to be between $300 and $500. The food inspection trucks, if we had such a thing, which we have always brought our own food, is, would be $125. It's beyond us to be able to have a neighborhood event at this, at these costs. We would like to suggest a variance for neighborhoods such as ours, and, you know, we'll be willing to pay for part of that, but the insurance portion is just prohibitive for us. We'd like for that to be considered, or we're looking at our event to be March the 11th. So if you would consider that, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Christian Widdish, and today, as a resident of Cape Coral for all the few 15 years of my life, I'm representing the youth of this city. On February 7, 2023, I served as a student representative on the Lee County School Board, where I called on the Lee County School Board to enact a district-wide campaign against an issue often never talked about, a sensitive issue, sexual violence. The National Sexual Violence Resource Center projected that one in three women will experience sexual violence in the United States for the first time between the ages of 11 and 17, and for men, it is one in four. I've met with council members Long, Cosin, and Hayden about the possibility of exploring action in this area, of serving victims within the city, especially youth victims. I speak today to extend this conversation to all members of the council, the mayor, and your wonderful staff, to work with student leaders like myself, to talk, to negotiate, to speak up. And this issue for me is one that hits very close to home. Friends of mine, close family members, and many more are victims of sexual violence, and I have made it my mission to do something about it. And I'd love to work with all of you, to be proactive, to be the voice for those who no longer have it. I look forward to your interest, and I respectfully yield back.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to our citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I will open up council discussion for citizens' input, but maybe before we do that, we could get our Public Works Director, Mr. Elchism, to the podium, kind of give us a synopsis of where we were last week compared to this week regarding our canal cleanup.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Elchism, Public Works Director. As of today, we, the one resident that spoke that said that we did not halt the program is correct. We do have 16 crews that are performing this work from the land, and there are seven crews performing the work from the water. Activities that have happened since last Wednesday to this Wednesday, we spoke with DEP, FWC. FWC performed a couple ad hoc site inspections this weekend on crews that were actually doing work over the weekend, actually observed the pre-work walkthrough by both the monitors and the crews onsite. At one of them, they observed our crews actually finding an unmarked gopher tortoise burrow, observed the reporting of that, and then ultimately the adding of it to our layer. So they verified that we are using best management practices in advance of beginning the work. And then this morning, there was training of all the crews and monitors regarding the gopher tortoise burrowing owl nesting season and the distances. So we've continued to do exactly what we've said. We understand the concerns that are raised. Just this morning, we had a call to a reporter indicating that we were working 12 inches from a bird. You know, we, Public Works and our crews and our crews have to be right 100% of the time. We have to make sure we're doing exactly what we need to do 100% of the time. They have to be right once, and then our credibility is out the window. So we, everything that they report, we respond to as if it is the most senior violation that they're observing. So when we heard that they were working 12 inches from a bird, we immediately assume it's protected species, either an eagle, a burrowing owl. We, I sent the monitor superintendent, I sent the crew superintendent, and contacted the PIO and said that this, we're sending everybody out there, can you get us the address? We get the address, we go out there, and it's a cattle bird. It's a white egret, which, they live for running in front of equipment because they like to pick the bugs that are being disturbed. So we continue to field everything that they bring to us as if it's worst-case scenario, but just like last week where there was an allegation of us running over a gopher tortoise or a burrowing owl, this week it was, we're working within 12 inches of a bird. It was not a protected species. But we have to be right 100% of the time, and I understand that, that that's on our shoulders, and we, we are doing everything we can to make sure that that is how we're treating this effort, to make sure we're not doing anything to jeopardize any of the protected species.
And another question, any of the state or federal agencies that have been out and examined these particular sites, has there been any documentation or any documented violation at any of these sites?
No, they're observing our processes, both pre-work, what happens during the work. We've had FEMA, we've had DEP, we've had EPA, we've had FWC, we've had NRCS. Trust me, this is federally funded, there are eyes on this everywhere. I would like to touch on one thing now. So there's somebody indicating that we may need permission to go on property. Again, the PUE is an encumbrance on every parcel that we have the right to use, just like we didn't need permission to go do bubble curtains, we don't need permission to go clear the canal banks. We have a right to maintain that for our stormwater utility.
Okay, thank you. The other couple items that I wrote down here, the one young gentleman that talked about youth sexual violence, Councilmember Hayden, this sounds like a golden opportunity for the youth council to get engaged in, so I wanted to kind of get your opinion on that.
Yeah, as Christian said, he met with myself, Councilmember Long, and Councilmember Cosin today. He's experienced sexual violence in his family. It's a big concern for our community and all communities at the depth that it occurs, and he's spoken at youth council a couple times, and I told him today that it will be important for him to take a leadership role in this and working with us and what we can do in possibly developing policies, but also making it part of the youth council strategic plan, which we're developing. These kids need to be heard. They want to have a voice, and they spend too much time keeping it in, and everything that they're facing in their lives right now, it's very difficult for them. So we're going to continue to work with the youth council in making sure that voice is heard, making sure we move forward. in making sure that voice is heard, making sure we move forward with a plan that starts initiatives that are important, with working with nonprofits that already exist to deal with situations like this. I've, Chief Sizmore, I've encouraged him to reach out and have a discussion with you about the gravity and the seriousness of this issue. So we will continue to move forward with this, with our youth council, and developing a way to keep this pathway and this voice moving forward.
Okay, thank you. The two other things I had listed on my sheet was the block party, the resident who spoke about the block party. I was wondering if staff members could reach out and see if there's any other alternatives to maybe be able to help that group of people in that particular street.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask our Parks and Rec Director, Joe Petrella, to reach out to that resident, just to make sure that we're walking her through the process and making, and making sure that everything that she needs to get that block party organized and moving on, that we can help her with that. There are some things that we can't waive. In fact, we don't necessarily have the authority to do it, the council might. But we'll work with her and see what we can come up with so that they can have a successful block party. And I do also know that there was a resident who was bringing up a code issue. It did sound by his description that the code department division is following the process that's spelled out for them. But I will follow up with code tomorrow on this particular case.
And maybe you could follow up with council with a brief email, exactly what you find and, and what, you know, what our next steps are. Thank you. That's all the comments I had. Okay, any other comments? All right, thank you very much. We will move on to the consent agenda. I'll now open the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion. If no items are pulled, then we would need a motion for, to approve the items as listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B is appointments to boards and committee. Board one is Planning and Zoning Commission. My understanding, Madam City Clerk, we have two vacancies for members and two alternate vacancies. And it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight applicants. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. And I would just ask council, are we going to follow our normal decorum where we give each candidate one minute to introduce themselves and tell us anything they would like us to know? And then after that, we'll go down the voting order, how we're voting tonight. I figured we'll maybe separate this. We'll do the two voting members first, and then we'll go to the two alternate positions. Is that, is that okay with council?
That's good.
All righty, Madam City Clerk.
May I verify that was a one-minute timer?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I'll call the following names to come up to the podium for an interview. Philip Botana.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I've been a, you've all got my package, so I won't go into a lot of the details on my background. I have a desire to serve the city. I've been here for several, quite some years now. I think it's important that periodically, to the different committees that you have, you bring some new blood in, new ideas. I tend to think about issues from a customer point of view rather than a process point of view. So I think that would be a perspective that I would bring. My experience at airports over 45 years has made me quite familiar with land use rules. And so I think I would be able to adapt to the process for the Planning and Zoning Committee quite well. I would, I'm probably the type of personality that when there's presentations by the staff to the zoning board, to ask questions, took too long.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Gunter, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. My name is Ken Fearetti, and I want to thank you for previously appointing me to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In the year and a half that I've served on this commission, I feel I've made positive contributions to our community. I strive to be an advocate for the local residents in understanding their concerns while also balancing the rights of the applicant and the welfare of the city as a whole. I'm also a member of the newly created Cape Compete Economic Development Advisory Board, which serves as a conduit between our city and the business community to help bring investments and development to the city. I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you feel my work has been beneficial to our city, I respectfully request that you reappoint me so I can continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Charles Greenberg. Mr. Greenberg had a schedule conflict and was unable to attend this evening, but he is very interested in serving. David Carrigan.
I'm David Carrigan. I have lived in Cape Coral in two months. It'll be 20 years. I am an active real estate broker and a state-certified general contractor with experience in residential development, commercial development, multifamily development. I'm reliable, dependable, and ethical. I would like to be on this board to be part of making a difference as the city of Cape Coral is rapidly growing. I would like to have a positive impact on this beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise King.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Louise King, and I am a new member of Cape Coral. I've lived here just over a year. But I do have experience on quite a few boards. And I have served on a city council and as a mayor, but to a much smaller community. But listening to meetings that I've watched online and today, I can assure you that the problems that you face and the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission faces are pretty universal. People are very passionate about their homes and residents are. And there is a balance between what the city needs and what the residents would like. So I am familiar with that, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Robert O'Connor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gunter and Council. My name is Bob O'Connor, and I am seeking reappointment to a permanent position on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I've been a Cape Coral resident since 1974, and I have served on the commission since 2018, first as an alternate, then as a permanent member, and presently as co-chair over the last 12 months. I feel my experience and knowledge is helpful and needed when navigating city ordinances and subject matter. In particular, the Land Development Code, which is still being tweaked and modified since its inception in August of 20, excuse me, 2019. I respectfully ask your support, and thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Schwartz.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Jack Schwartz. I am currently an alternate on the Planning and Zoning Commission, have been for the past year. I am a resident of Cape Coral since 1974. I've run my electrical contracting business out of the city for 30 years. And I have a little more time to be involved in the planning and the future of our city. And I appreciate the opportunity to do that. And I think one year as an alternate really isn't enough to understand the functioning of the boards. It takes a little time to get involved. So I request appointment for another year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Daniel Severson. Mr. Severson had a schedule conflict, but asked that I pass along to council that he's very eager to serve.
Thank you.
That's the end.
Okay, so I guess we'll go down the list, and each council member will give two members for the permanent positions first.
Gunter?
Severson. And Botana.
Severson, Botana. Hayden?
Severson, Botana.
Severson, Botana. Long?
Severson, King.
Severson, King. Shepherd? Severson, Botana. Steinke?
Severson, Botana.
Severson, Botana. Welsh?
O'Connor, Schwartz.
O'Connor, Schwartz. Cosden?
O'Connor and King.
O'Connor and King. Cummings?
Severson and Botana.
Okay, so that is, one moment while I tally. I have five for Botana, two for King, two for O'Connor, one for Schwartz, and six for Severson.
So we would need a motion for Mr. Severson and Mr. Botana to be appointed to the permanent positions of the Planning and Zoning Board.
Motion to approve Severson and Botana to the permanent seats on the board.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please, Madam City Clerk.
Your Honor, I do have a expiration date of the current members of February 28, and we have a meeting on Friday. So I wondered if council would consider including in the motion that the effective date is February 28, 2023.
And I apologize, you did give me that note. And apparently, these positions will need to take place beginning on February 28, 2023. So would the motion maker be inclined to make that revision?
We'll make the effective, effective date February 28, 2023.
And the second? Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the two alternate positions. Madam City Clerk?
Gunter?
King. And Carrigan.
King and Carrigan. Hayden?
Schwartz and Fearetti.
Schwartz and Fearetti. Long?
King and Carrington.
King and Carrington. Shepherd?
King and Greenberg.
King and Greenberg. Steinke?
Schwartz and Fearetti.
Schwartz, Fearetti. Welsh?
King, Schwartz.
King and Schwartz. Cosden?
King and Schwartz.
Cummings?
King and Carrington.
King and Carrington. One moment while I run the tally. So I have two for Fearetti, one for Greenberg, three for Carrigan, six for King, four for Schwartz.
So do we have a motion for King and Schwartz to fill the two alternate vacancy positions that will take effect on February 28, 2023?
So moved. Second.
Is there any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
I apologize, I didn't hear a second.
I heard Councilmember Hayden.
Thank you. Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to 9C unfinished business. C1, follow-up items for council. We don't have anything listed. Does council have any follow-up items? Seeing none. 9C2, we moved up in the agenda earlier in the meeting. Item 9D is new business. D1 is Resolution 47-23. Madam City Clerk?
This evening, we have Resolution 4723 to approve a tax increment rebate agreement. I believe we do have Sharon Woodby with the Economic Development Department, if there are any questions.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Sharon Woodbury, Economic and Business Development Officer. The agreement before you consists of a project that highlights being, it's a 500, a $55 million project. Square footage is 48,000 square feet of retail and professional space, 218 apartments, a pedestrian promenade to Cape Coral Parkway, and 500 space parking garage. As phase two, there will be a 25-slip transient boat dock. CRA approved the tax, tax increment component of this on February 7 at their recent meeting. Before you is the transfer of the slip credits, and that being a component of this agreement. I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 47-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. The next item is D2, Resolution 57-23. Assistant Madam City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is an agreement between FEMA and the City of Cape Coral to access some city parcels. Amy Yearsley is here with us, our planning manager, to discuss this agreement. I believe we also have representatives from FEMA who will be available to answer any questions as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, Amy Yearsley, planning manager. This is kind of just a recap for the council and members of audience. The Direct Temporary Housing Assistance Mission will be provided for at least 18 months, beginning from September 29, 2022, and was announced 10/6 for Charlotte Collier, DeSoto, and Lee. FEMA provides temporary housing assistance, provides options for impacted individuals whose homes are uninhabitable due to Hurricane Even. And how do they do this? They have three primary types of missions that they are doing. The multifamily lease and repair, the transportable temporary housing units, which is a topic of our conversation tonight. This includes trailers on private sites, trailers on, in commercial parks, like Tranquility Lakes, and on congregate sites, which is what we're going to be discussing briefly this evening. They also have a direct lease program. So as of 1/27, 1,985 households were approved for direct housing in Lee County. They also have a de- lease, a direct lease program. So as of one-twenty-seven, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five households were approved for direct housing in Lee County, and there was a deficit of just under a thousand units. There have been some challenges with floodplains and private sites. And FEMA is working with county and local municipalities like ourselves, Bonita Springs, to identify public and private sites that could be utilized to address the deficit that we're facing. The city-owned properties subject to the resolution are one of these sites. So what does Resolution fifty-seven dash twenty-three do? It authorizes the city manager or his designee to execute a consent of access, right of entry for a number of city properties, and you can see them, they're located on the map, and they're just north of this site here at City Hall. This is the first step. This will allow FEMA to conduct site assessments for the possible location of a FEMA group site. With that being said, we do have FEMA's direct housing team here this evening to answer any questions you have about how this process works, how it starts, how it, you put them in, how they lease up, and how they get taken down, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven dash twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Patty seconded.
Patty seconded?
Yes. Second, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll open it up for discussion.
And do we want to hear from FEMA on how this is going to work? Should it get approved?
Sure. They want to give us a quick update. While they're coming up to the podium, one of the questions that I have is connecting to water and sewer, how we're going to do that.
I will have them address that as part of their discussion. They do have their sites engineered by Army Corps of Engineers, so I will let them talk about how that process works.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pam Zawada, and I am the lead for the identification, design, and construction for FEMA group sites. What we do is when we get access to a property that we feel is in the right location, that meets the need for our, the remaining housing need, people who need housed, we take a look at the connection to utilities. Is it available? Does it currently exist? And how many residents we could house on the site? We do do a full design that is subject to approval by the county or the, or the jurisdiction here in Cape Coral. It is subject to all state and federal laws as well. As far as connection to sewer and water and electricity, we make plans with the, with the jurisdiction to identify what the right connection point is. The plan for this site is to fully restore it at the end of the project, at the end of the eighteen months when direct housing is no longer needed, back to the current conditions, which is basically a grassy field. All the connections will be approved, fully permitted, inspected prior to us finishing our construction and occupancy by the residents. The timeline is fairly quick. We hope to have the sites, all the sites that we need constructed and occupied before the June of this year, so that we can give people the maximum period of time to be able to be in safe, secure housing, so they can find, either finish their construction on it or reconstruction on their homes, or find new rental properties.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions that I have. How many portable trailers are we going to be putting at Tranquility Lake?
Tranquility Lake, we have leased a hundred and five locations. And right now, we have, I believe we have a hundred and five on-site that are in the process of being installed, and a fair number of them, people are already living in.
And the hundred and five, are they all FEMA trailers?
Yes, yes.
And have we identified how many Cape Coral residents are in need of, of housing here in our city?
I'm actually going to let Mr. Piper, who is our individual assistance lead, take that question.
Good afternoon, sir. What was that question again?
Well, no, have we identified how many households are in need here in the city of Cape Coral for, for housing assistance?
So you have a hundred and nineteen applicants that have expressed the need for FEMA's temporary housing program. The breakdown, sorry, breakdown to that is a hundred and sixteen are renters, and I mean, a hundred and sixteen are owners and three renters. We have currently housed forty-two of them applicants, thirty are at Tranquility, and we are trying to utilize this park, this group site for more of your residents.
So to make sure I'm clear, we found housing for a total of forty-two of the one nineteen, and thirty of those individuals are at Tranquility Lake. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, sir. Nine are in a direct lease, which means FEMA has, works with vendors to secure property, and they are in apartments, and three are on private sites, are, are, are on private sites installed.
Okay. And the reason I ask that question, you know, I know that throughout our region, we are in need of housing, not only in our city, but throughout the region, whether it's Sanibel, Fort Myers Beach, unincorporated Lee County. But a concern that I have is putting some of these trailer villages on parcels that's going to impact our residents. And as you could see in the, in the map that was given in our backup material, I know some of those residents have reached out. I know I did see, see a few of them speak on the news over the weekend, that they were not in favor of this particular site. For me, because of the housing that's near this particular site, I know we own other properties in the city, I'd rather find another parcel that's less impactful. This parcel, if you look at it, is fairly small. I think we have some larger parcels that could be maybe a better fit. But even by their numbers, forty-two out of the hundred and five Cape Coral residents have been located, you know, so that, you know, leaves about, what, about sixty-three, sixty-three residents. And it sounds like we still have another seventy-some spots at Tranquility Lakes. So one thing that I don't want to do is impact our residents, bring in residents from Pine Island or Fort Myers Beach. As much as I know the housing, I think our responsibility is to our residents as far as the impacts. And I want to try to get as impacts at a minimum. So before I would support something like this, I would like to know, number one, all the city-owned parcels that we have in the city that could be a potential site, and look at all those sites and see which site would have the least amount of impact. As we can see with this site, it's small in size, we have, it's pretty much surrounded by residents. So if we put trailers there for the next eighteen months, I promise you, it's going to be pretty impactful for that neighborhood. So for that reason, I wouldn't support this at this time. Thank you. Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, thank you. One of my questions was your concerns exactly that we're putting trailers up in a residential neighborhood, but do we know the amount that would be on this property? Because if I see this as home sites, I see it as three, six, nine. So are we, are we talking putting thirty trailers here or, or ten? Have we done any of that study yet?
Yes, the maximum site, number of trailers in this site is fifteen or seventeen.
Okay. I have to agree with everything the mayor said. I don't know if this is the site, knowing that we haven't even filled up the hundred and five at Tranquility Lake, which is built for this reason, for trailers and to be held there. So to, to build this and then tear it down within a year, I'm not sure this is the property for it. So I'm against a residential neighborhood getting seventeen trailers in it.
Yeah, one other thing real quick before I go on to the next council member. The, if I recall correctly, in the meetings that I had early on in this process, I know one of the things that we were trying to avoid were these types of FEMA villages. We wanted trailers put at these specific households if possible. And I know that the trailers at one point couldn't be located on a residential home that was in a flood zone. And I think that recently FEMA has reevaluated that, and I think that they can't be installed in a, in a V-zone, but they can be installed in a flood zone. Is that correct? And are we still moving forward with that methodology to try to put these trailers at residential sites that were impacted in our community as, as a result of this storm?
Yes, sir, we are. One of the issues with, our, our goal, primary goal is, would, would be to have people at their private site, a trailer next to their damaged dwelling where they're right on their property. But there are several things that have to be right in order for that to happen. Number one would be the zoning. We can't be in a coastal high hazard zone. We do have the ability to be in a floodplain in AE based on the elevation, if we can elevate it appropriately. If we put travel trailers into a coastal, into an AE zone, we actually need to, they have to be placed under rules that are consistent with your floodplain rules, local floodplain ordinances. And so those may not be able to be there for longer than a hundred and eighty days in order to make sure that you maintain your, your community rating. The other thing that we need, that we run into, is that the size of a, a trailer or a manufactured housing unit that the family needs may not fit on their property. If a family has, needs three bedrooms, and the size of their property will only fit a travel trailer, that's not appropriate. And we use HUD standards in order to size the units for the, for the properties, for the individual households that are needed. So there, there's a lot of times that between the coastal high hazard zone elevation requirements and the actual just space requirements for the, for the families, that we haven't been able to put trailers on people's private property.
So do we know how many individuals out of the hundred and nineteen that we have here in the city of Cape Coral are in the area where we can't put a trailer? That is in those high flood zones or in that V-zone?
Sir, the numbers, the numbers that are left, I don't know which one is just because of a coastal high hazard zone, but for some reason, there was a technical reason why we could not install a trailer on their site. I don't know whether, which one is based on family composition or which one is based on floodplain. I don't have that information right now.
And have you reached out to the county? You know, I know there's many larger facilities here in Lee County. One example is, you know, the Lee Convention Center out off of Route Thirty-One. That just, that one comes to mind. Have we, have we been in discussions with the county as well?
We are working with the county, and we are looking at several sites throughout. The, the county deficit for the number of pads that we need, of places for people to live, is, is almost six hundred. So I'm looking to, to build locations for six hundred. One of the things we'd like to do is we'd like to keep people as close to their communities as possible, as close to their doctors, their houses of worship. And one of, the way we occupy the, the units is we do it based on proximity to where the location is, as to where the people lived originally. So having a location like this that is in a residential area where people used to live as well, it keeps them closer to their, their social support system, and their doctors, their businesses, their schools, et cetera. So that's why we, we actually feel that this is a very useful site in order to place these trailers.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. Did I, did I understand it that these will absolutely be for Cape Coral citizens that were displaced?
Yes, sir. We, yes, yes, sir, there is a need for just Cape Coral residents for this site. Like I said, we only have three renters out of all of it, and definitely have the need to keep them in the community.
Okay, but we, of the, whatever it was, nineteen hundred that have, have been approved for dwelling, the ones that would go in these would be, out of those nineteen hundred, would be Cape Coral residents that need that housing.
Correct, and these are MHU, mobile home units, that obviously, we're going to do basically design, not, all applicants are going to be able to go to Tranquility due to household composition or access and functional needs. And we are going to prioritize the applicants strictly just for the MHUs, for the leftover population of the commercial, um, commercial park applicants that are on hold for other solutions as well.
Okay, thanks. And the, the time clock on this, the, the eighteen months, do I understand that to begin September twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
And that, that we would not, they'd not be able to access these for their temporary dwelling until June? Did I hear that?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, so nine months of the eighteen months, in a sense, will already be gone?
Yes, sir. Yeah, meanwhile, we're start, we're, we're still pursuing direct lease units. What we do is we have six vendors, like I said, we, what we do is ready for quote, and we tell them the zip codes that we need and the areas that we're needing. And currently, we're working, you know, with the, with the vendor on these properties. That's how we found the eleven vacant units. Two of the applicants are in background check, so hopefully anticipate the next three or four days, them applicants that have already accepted them units will go in them units.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, so we have people that are in need, and it's been over five months, and they can't get in till June. And it would start at September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Couple of things. I'm in agreements with what the mayor had said. However, we are also in an urgency, which should have been done in October. We're talking about it in February. So how soon is it going to take for us to find something? And number two, the applicants that you guys are looking at, can we have an opportunity to see your applicants that are coming to you that are in need of a place to stay? And also, how do you determine your applicants on who can stay in a FEMA trailer and who can't? And number three, why is the timing taking so long for these victims?
So the, the first question, yes, I can give you the data as far as these applicant goes, as where they're, they're currently staying. We do have applicants that are in our TSA hotels that have to be out on March twenty-eighth of this year. Applicants receive rental assistance as well, as far as that goes. And it, it, we've scoured the counties as far as commercial parks. Some commercial parks are not willing to work with us, others, their pads are taking for, for the year, and we can't do that, and some of them are privately owned. So we, we are, we do work with our applicants on a daily basis, and we do call them. As far as how, how we prioritize is obviously their current status. Are they homeless? Are they sleeping in their car, in their tent? Are they sleeping in their damaged dwelling that's uninhabitable? That's how we prioritize the applicants.
Did you reach out to us in an earlier date to see if we had an area for these trailers?
For the commercial parks, I believe the commercial park team has been in communication with the counties and the local officials as far as working with them, and also trying to find an adapted group site locations.
So my question is, is did they reach out to Cape Coral back when the hurricane had taken place, to see if there was landing zone for the trailers to come to?
So to answer your question, city staff meets with FEMA and Lee County officials weekly to talk about the whole direct housing mission. When we initially started discussing this, the situation was a little bit different because most of our city-owned properties were being utilized for debris or other staging activities. We do see that there's an opportunity now, as things are kind of winding down, to go back and reexamine the city-owned properties that could potentially be utilized for this. However, there are some challenges with debris sites as far as environmental clearance But we can, we can go back and we can look at them again now, now that the situation has changed, and bring it back if that is the council's direction.
Well, if you ask me, I think the clock has been ticking for quite some time, and I think we're all in agreements up here. We have citizens of Cape Coral that are needing a place to stay, and I believe we can act on this pretty quickly using the mayor's guidance in helping us find a great location to place these trailers. But you're saying if we find a location, we're looking at June?
Well, we'd have to secure, they're going to have to do their environmental type reviews, site design with Army Corps of Engineer permitting. June is, I think, what they're really looking at with all the steps that they have to take.
So the time started back September 28th, and then we go all the way up to June, so we lose that time, so it was 18 months, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The 18 months is the statutory or the period of the program. I know that the state can request, if needed, an extension to the program, and so that is possible.
Okay, so they have one year. How can you start the extension, the extra eight months, starting in June? So it gives them a full 18 months.
So that is not something I can answer. That's something that we would need to involve the state in the conversation.
Do you think you can involve the state in this conversation so they can get that extra eight months that they lost?
That's, that's something we could discuss with the emergency management team, I think.
I think that would be good, don't you? Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Amy, the way this resolution reads, it just allows them access to decide to do their due diligence to see if it's even suitable for.
Correct.
Should you determine that it's suitable, does it come back before us as a separate resolution?
We would have to execute an agreement with FEMA for the site, yes. So you would have a second set of orders on it.
So it would come before us again. This is, this is just the first step.
Yes, it would come back before you.
And are utilities even available on this site? Okay. See, and that's a, that's a key thing, because a lot of other sites aren't going to have utilities available and aren't going to qualify. So what made this as a possible site was that it had that sort of access and would help in the process. Any other site we might determine probably isn't going to have that type of access, and it's still going to take as long. Are we going to fill up Tranquility Lakes first, knowing that there's still a long way to go to fill that up? And is this like an extra site that would be used for any, if we reach capacity at the other site?
So, yeah, yes, our intent is to fill up Tranquility Lake Commercial Park. We have 32 applicants in there right now. Forty-two, 48 other applicants are in the background check process, which, like I said, unfortunately, it's taken three to four days for that to happen, and we're identifying other applicants. But like I said, not all applicants are going to be able to utilize Tranquility Park due to the household composition and access and functional needs.
So chances are, we're not even going to fill up Tranquility Park.
We have enough applicants between here and, you know, other areas that border your community to fill up Tranquility Park.
So you think it'll fill up? When you say other areas, are you talking about Cape Coral or are you talking about somewhere else?
We're probably talking a couple of months, a couple of weeks to fill up the whole park.
Okay, okay.
He didn't answer your question.
Which one?
Where are the other applicants coming from?
Yeah, all right. Yeah, when you say other areas, are you talking about outside of Cape Coral?
But, yeah, based on where Tranquility is located, it would probably capture some Pine Island.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I think until they do their due diligence and determine if this site's even available, you know, there's another step to this process, so I don't want to rule it out if it's the only site that may be avail, available, available at least for utilities. That's it.
And if I could talk to the gentleman again, just real quickly, I just want to make sure I got my numbers right here. There's 105 spots at Tranquility Lake.
That's correct, sir.
And you said you had 30 people now and another 48 individuals that are going through the screening process? Is that what I heard you say?
That is correct. 32 applicants have been licensed in as of this morning. We had another five appointments today scheduled, and 48 others are in the background process, screening process.
All right. Now, out of the 80 individuals that you have going to that location, are they all Cape Coral residents?
Most of them are, yes, but like I said, we do have a population where the household composition's larger and access and functional needs where we can't place these applicants in these trailers.
So I take that as a no.
Yes, sir, that's a no.
Okay. You know, for me, I want to make sure that we take care of our own residents first and make sure that they, they have spots. You know, I know that, I had talked about Tranquility Lake in the very early days of the hurricane. I think Councilmember Long had reached out to the, to the property owner to help try to facilitate that. I think it's a perfect location. You know, you've mentioned that we've already housed 42 people out of the 119.
That's correct, sir.
You know, so if you do the numbers, there's enough there in Tranquility Lake to put all the Cape Coral residents. What I'm not willing to do is to put up FEMA villages in the city that are extremely impactful to our residents. Not that, you know, I don't want anyone to take this wrong, not that I don't want to help those individuals, I just want to make sure that we put them in the best spot with the least amount of impact on their residents. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Just one question and then a couple of comments. So whenever it's over, if it's, if it's over 18 months from September, what, how quickly and how undisruptively are they removed and put back the way it originally was? How long does that take?
To completely restore a site, taking out all, all of the utilities that we've installed takes, we'd say about 45 days. This is a pretty small site. It could take much less time, but because there is, you know, once we, once the residents are all gone, we remove the trailers, we, there's a period of contracting, some building and zoning approvals that we need to get, so we estimate about 45 days before the site is put back to pre-existing conditions.
Okay, and go ahead.
I just was going to state, it might be worthwhile to hear from FEMA about how these commercial sites, or not commercial sites, congregative sites are managed ten, past versus how they were managed in the past. So a lot of people have connotations of Charlie when they think about what happened in Charlotte County, and they've evolved from that time. So I think it'd be, might be worthwhile to hear how they actually bring people in and how they manage the sites as well.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm not so concerned about that, and I would agree with Councilmember Hayden that at this point, if all we're doing is giving permission to, let's see if this place is even feasible, I certainly don't want to slow the clock down anymore that it's already been slowed down through all the other processes. My, I would feel a whole lot better if we come back and say that this has been deemed feasible, that, that there is a longer period for people to use that shelter as they try to put their lives back together. So we definitely have people that are in need. It sounds to me like we're going to have people that are going to be displaced for the second time come March, when the, when the TSA occupants are having to find another place to go when that expires. So it would seem like those that we've already found housing for on a temporary basis, that because they were displaced, now they're about to become displaced again from where they were given shelter to start with. So we're going to have, in a sense, a compound problem where they need shelter again. And so I'm willing to support anything that will, will provide housing for those, for those folks that are in need, if it is feasible, with as little impact as the other citizens around them. And I agree with, with the mayor that this needs to be for Cape Coral citizens before, until all of them are taken care of inside of the city. And so I can support the feasibility, but when, when they come back with a positive result of the feasibility study, then I would like to see a longer period of time. And so whoever needs to be approached for an extension to the typical statutory requirement because of the fact that it's taken so long to get these places available, I think they should take that into consideration, give these folks a little longer period of time, rather than for them to be facing the same thing that folks are going to be facing in March, when they've got to move out again and look for another place to, you know, for their shelter. So that, that's it. Thank you.
In that comment, Councilmember Steinke, I had the opportunity to be in about an hour and a half meeting today with Congressman Donalds, and this discussion was brought up, trying to get that time period, because right now, the time period starts when the event occurred. But as we see, we're four and a half months into this, and we just started seeing our first trailers in this region last week. So we're definitely behind the eight ball for these residents, and I can understand that. One thing that, no matter how this vote goes today, I will reach out. To me, this needs to be a regional approach, not just the city of Cape Coral, very similar to today, when I had a meeting with Congressman Donalds, Fort Myers, Fort Myers Beach, Benita. Sanibel wasn't there because she had a prior engagement. But I think that we need to sit down as a region and address this housing issue, because, you know, the county may have some spots, these other municipalities may have some spots. So I think we need to identify these locations as a region instead of them coming to us for Cape Coral, then they go to Benita, then they go to Sanibel, Fort Myers Beach, Benita, wherever the case may be, unincorporated Lee County. I think we need to get together collectively, and I will reach out to those elected officials tomorrow and try to set up that meeting so we can have that discussion. Excuse me, that way, when we have this discussion again, I'll be able to pass that information on to you. With that being said, I don't see any, Councilmember Cummings.
Yeah, I have one more question. You might have answered this, I can't really remember because we've been going, taking notes and everything. Why has it taken so long? Why is it June, if you don't mind me asking?
So ma'am, basically, we start by trying to put people closer, as close as possible to their, to their locations. We did start the site for location, the search for locations in all the affected counties immediately after the storm. As we move forward, we figure out how many people need housing, we figure out how many people were able to put on their private site locations, how many commercial parks were able to, to have. And then get to the point where we realize that there is just not enough, we're not going to have enough resources to move forward, is when we start approaching communities and counties and individual landowners in order to find out if they're willing to, if their, if their site is suitable, if they're willing to work with us, will they give us the permission to, to use their site for, for group sites? And that's where we are now, is that we've been working this whole time to continue to keep people as close as possible to where they currently lived prior to the storm. It unfortunately takes a while, and there are a lot of things that we had to look at and move through. In order to get to this point, we have looked at over 500 sites in Lee County, talked to landowners, some of them were not suitable for various reasons, no utilities, or the land was, had a technical flaw, like maybe it had contamination, or we wouldn't be able to build what we needed to there. So that's where we are right now, is we're at the point where we're, we're looking for everything that we can to be able to bring people close to where they used to live.
Okay, so my question is, you're here now with us, and it's February. So with us finding an area, why June still?
Well, so ma'am, it's, the only reason it's June is because that's, right now, on the timeline of how long it's going to take to, to build it out, is if, if I had a land agreement with the city right now, I could have it built out in probably two and a half months. But we need to do the assessment, the environmental assessment, and once we get the environmental assessment back and we get the approval from the city that you're willing to move forward, it take, will probably take between 45 to 60 days to complete construction and have people moved in. We will move as quickly as we humanly can. It's just that some of these things, we are, we are building a community, and some of the things just take some time to put in sewers and water and electricity to meet all the code requirements and all the zoning requirements that are required to do a full construction project. So if we can do it earlier, we absolutely will.
So God forbid, if this happens again, how can we get you guys to move quicker so we're not, you know, eight months into this? How can we get this moving immediately after a hurricane would strike? I mean, what could we do to help you to move this in a lot faster for next time, just so we're prepared?
So some of the things that other communities have done to be able to help is that in their ordinances, they have codes specifically around emergencies, looking at the placement of trailers, if there are ordinances in the city about the placement of trailers on private sites, on, on, in driveways, what the setbacks are, things like that. That helps. If there was an emergency authority for a city manager or a single person to be able to have this kind of discussion with FEMA about property, either the rights of entry or indeed leasing agreement, that would be very useful so that instead of waiting for a council meeting as we go forward, each, each little piece takes an extra amount of days. Those are things that other communities have done in the past that just helps speed up every piece of the process.
Would you mind putting a list together and handing it to the mayor before you guys leave this evening? That would be great, if that's okay with you, so we can look at it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
No.
Costin?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
That's six ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 9E, personnel actions. We do not have any personnel actions listed. 9F is petitions to counsel. We do not have any of those as well. Item 9G, follow-up items for city manager. G1 is Hurricane Ian recovery update. Madam Assistant City Manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Fire Chief Lamb will give you the most recent update. As you know, the updates are getting shorter and shorter and shorter, so at some time, we would like to discuss with the council how long they want to continue to have this item on the agenda, but tonight, Chief Lamb is here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. As the Assistant City Manager mentioned, there's still a lot of things that are productive going on in the background, but there are a lot of things that are going to take some time, whether it be seeking hazard mitigation grant dollars and some of the processes that we're continuing to work through with Hagerty, our consultant partner on financial recovery, and as we begin to wrap up the process of debris. So we'll start there. I believe Mike I will give us a quick update on debris, and then I believe we have a couple of comments from the Finance Director.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Ilchis, Public Works Director. Just some updates on the debris management sites. The Southwest CND site, where the, where the bulk of the housing and construction and demolition debris has been closed, all material hauled off. We're waiting on the fence removal. There's a security fencing. The site was already seeded with native grass, and Series is actually driving through with a water truck to get that seed, seed to start, so that neighborhood is kind of back on track with everything cleaned up. The Southwest Resident Drop-Off Site, which was off a beach, similar situation, waiting on fence removal. The site has been seeded with native grass and Series is watering. The Skyline Site, where the horticultural was going, is closed. We're waiting on fence removal there, and then we'll re-bring that seed and water. The Northeast Site, the CND portion- The Northeast Site, the CND portion, has been removed. So, there was a site where we had combined both CND and vegetation, kind of servicing both in the north. The CND has been removed, the veget, final vegetation is being ground up, and then that is expected to finish up this week. So, then, then we'll begin restoring that site. The Northwest Vegetation Site, which is the one off of Diplomat, is the last one that is going to be operating. That's the one that is accepting all of the vegetation from the canal debris. But as far as everything else goes, haul-out of the vegetation that was taken in as part of the upland removal has been complete, and so they're just working on the canal side. As I mentioned earlier, we have 16 land-based crews going and doing the canal debris removal, seven water, seven water-based crews. They're all taking those to the, that, all that vegetation is being taken to the Diplomat Site. And we did have, or there was a request here, and we, we did have an email from a resident about, apparently, the zone map for the, the canal debris clearing wasn't published. I don't know if there was a zone map that we had for the land-based. I think when that shut down, that zone map was inadvertently taken off. So, the zone map is going to be published for the residents to see what zones are in, what's been completed, what, what has started, and how, how many percent complete those canals are.
Just real quick, Mike, I bet, can you give us an update on the storm, storm drains, especially in the southern part of the city, west of Del Prado, where we had the surge?
Yeah, so, I did, I apologize, you had asked to have an update on that. So, I met with our crews. All of the, the storm inlets within the CRA were, were hand, you know, have, have been cleaned to date. They all had the lids opened, they've been cleaned. They're working their way down Cape Coral Parkway, and then they're going to be turning up Santa Barbara. So, that, they started in the heavy area with all the, the foot traffic and the car traffic, a lot of street trees in that area. So, they cleaned those, they're making their way down Cape Coral Parkway. I think they're anticipating being finished with that, and then they're going to be heading up Santa Barbara.
Now, are we just cleaning the catch basins, or are we cameraing the, the storm pipe itself?
No. So, if there's no blockage, so when we had a couple of those little rains, there was some blockages that were picked up. When we get those calls in, we'll go clean the catch basin, and then we'll camera the, we have like a pole camera that basically, you know, zooms through and looks through. We do that whenever we have a blockage. But absent that, then, then we don't, we don't camera each one.
Okay. So, you're pretty confident that by rainy season, we should be able to address the majority of the area that was impacted with storm surge?
Yeah. Like I said, they've already, they've already swept through all of the, the CRA and Cape Coral Parkway, all the way, almost, they're almost at Santa Barbara. And so, now, then, confident that they've been through that. The county has Del Prado, we can coordinate with them and make sure Del Prado is clean as well.
All right. And one last thing for me, Madam Assistant City Manager. I had that meeting today with Congressman Donalds. One of the discussions, and I was hoping I'd have some information to be able to share today, but I didn't get that, that I need to advocate for the city, is any type of hazard mitigation funding opportunities that we are looking at, and any federal appropriations that we'll be asking for. I will tell you that Congressman Donalds had mentioned to me that, like to have that by the end of March. So, maybe if we could get together, I could get together with staff, so I have a good full understanding of exactly what the city's asking for, so I could advocate in a future meeting for those, for those type of items.
So, we put on the 22nd, there's a Cow meeting, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is on that. So, we're going to go through all the projects that the city has put in for. But just to throw out there again, that mitigation is a long-term hardening of the city and not storm-related repairs. So, two different purposes of the dollars, but we're going to go in that through every project that was submitted, 33 projects, over $300 million is all going to get, we'll go walk through each of those there on the 22nd.
And the reason I asked, I know the county, in that meeting today, they had several projects identified. An example was their stormwater management pipes that they had applied for, or they're going to apply for, for federal appropriations and about $22 million. So, that's just one example. I just want to make sure that we're stepping up to the plate with the, with our ask as well. So, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item G2. It's permitting, why don't we back up for a second? Do we have one more individual?
Yeah, Mark Mason wanted to give you a little bit of an update as well.
Didn't see you there.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. Just a quick update, we received a third tranche of the expedited funding here last week, last Friday, approximately $5 million. That brings our total expedited funding up to $15 million. These will be used to pay any of the bills that we have that are upcoming. Series has filed their first invoice, and I, we expect that over the next couple of weeks, we'll be at least paying a partial payment on that invoice. The city has also filed its damage inventory with FEMA. We've also received an extension to March 10th to complete the damage inventory for signs, roads, anything that needs to be updated during that period of time. We've also begun inspections of our facilities with Oasis South Campus being the first one done last Saturday. We also have additional inspections beginning next Tuesday, as well as finishing Oasis North next Saturday on the 25th. The, these inspections are basically a precursor to the development of project worksheets. Those project worksheets take into account any insurance that we give back, and that will usually is, whatever's left over, is what we would file for claims with, with the state and with FEMA. And in addition, we've also started some of the turnkey project, projects that we have with our insurance company. These are whereby the, the insurance company has a contractor, they, they come in and they bring in contractors that are local to the area to go in and do repairs on many of our facilities, to get them back up and, and running, to get things, you know, basically fixed. And there's, in most cases, there are permanent repairs. We've done that with the Fire Station 10, which is up in the Gator Circle area. We did that probably within the first month following the, following the storm. So, these are just some of the things that we've got going on. And again, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Mark, did, do we have any update on whether FEMA has done the inspections that they need to do, so that we'd be at the liberty to start the demo on any of the buildings that we're not going to be able to, to repair there based on 50% rule?
That inspection, we're probably about two, two weeks out before that inspection is done. Part of that inspection is to ensure that, you know, the, if, you know, in effect, to, you know, make sure that we can apply for reimbursement with regard to that demo. But we don't expect the demo to happen, probably for at least a couple of months.
Okay. And I was, evidently, February 1st, a, a program launched, a, a funding program, state funding program called the Florida Boating Improvement Program. And I don't know if, if we're aware of that or not, and I don't know if any of those funds could be used for, you know, anything that might have been damaged during the hurricane, but certainly for those things that, from an infrastructure standpoint, or anything that we do for, for boating, I just wanted to make sure that, that we know that that was a program that was brought down. I don't know if it's one that's a repetitive program, but it's one that they just brought in, that municipalities that are doing-
Every year, there's a boating improvement program grant available to us.
Okay.
And we do apply for them.
Okay, awesome. That's it. Thank you.
One quick comment on the comment you made, Councilmember Steinke, in my conversation today with Congressman Donalds, other elected officials here in our region. One of the problems that we are experiencing is the FEMA inspectors going out and doing the inspections, so we can move forward to, to either beginning of repairs or demolition, because as we all know, that FEMA has to approve the paperwork that we submitted before we can do anything. And apparently, there is a very limited supply of inspectors from FEMA. So, Congressman Donalds will be reaching out up in Washington DC to address this. One of the alternatives could be private engineering firms that are approved by FEMA to do these inspections. That discussion was just today. Not sure where that's going to go, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, number one, there's really not enough inspectors from FEMA to do all the inspections that, for all the damage that we have in our region. Number two, how can we either get more inspectors or reach out to the private sector, which is probably going to be the best thing to do. But that has to be approved up in Washington. But that discussion we did have today, I just wanted to pass that on. Councilmember Cummings.
Well, you answered some of my questions, but I do have another question. Do we have grant writers here in the city that helps us as well as we have our lobbyists?
Absolutely.
How many do we have?
We have a grant writer in every department, for the most part. Plus, we also contract with Hagerty, we contract with Tetra Tech, as well as, we have seven additional grant-writing companies that are on, that we have available to us to contact for any grants.
So, all these grant writers that we have in the city, how many grant fundings did we get through this ordeal that we've been facing since September?
I don't understand. If we're talking about FEMA?
Yeah, besides FEMA to help people with the shelters, I'm just asking for the grant writers that we have. So, we have the, just when we're facing difficulties like the UEP program, the hurricane, the grant writers that you claim that we have in the city, how much monies have we been receiving? How well is this working for us, is my question?
Okay, so-
Not using our lobbyists.
No, I appreciate that. We've just gone through an exercise of developing something called a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program that is available to us, and it's a, it, and so we have to develop a list that goes to a county-level group that makes a determination of a priority list, even though many of the projects can still be funded in the future.
But this particular type of programming comes down from the federal government, they usually do it through a block grant of the state, and we get a piece of that, you know, depending on where we stand within the, within, within the priority. Now, that is just something that, once we get in the queue, then we have to develop additional documentation that supports that. And we have both Hagerty and, and Tetra Tech that's on board to do that. Now, the whole HMGP process will take, I think, probably at least another six months or less. Fire Chief can probably answer it a little bit better.
So, when we come and talk to you on the 22nd, we're going to walk you through the entire process. Again, hazard mitigation, mitigation dollars are used to harden the city, so that a future disaster doesn't impact us quite as bad. But those projects won't even start until August of 2024. So, you're that far out. And so, just to answer the question, I think, to the root of what you're looking at here, grants for, related to Hurricane Ian are just now getting started, to be able to apply and get those dollars. The grant process, the federal government, is a slow and arduous process. As far as reimbursement to the city for things that we spent through FEMA, that's a separate thing that we are actively getting dollars back on now. So, this grant process, again, as we come back to you on the 22nd, we're going to walk you through all those hazard mitigation grants, and at the end, we're going to have subject matter experts here from FEMA and Tetra Tech and, or, sorry, from Hagerty and Tetra Tech, that used to be FEMA people, that now are working for us, to walk us through and make sure we maximize every dollar that we can. And then outside of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, looking at ship grants, brick grants, all of these other things that are out there, that we can work to improve, not only city infrastructure and facilities, but some things for our residents as well.
Thank you.
So, does that answer the question? We're making every effort that we can, but it, in this particular circumstance, it, you know, there's a limited number of grants, and it's a timing issue more than anything else.
Yeah, I guess I'm just going back to like the past, working with UEP project, if you, with the grant writers that we have, if they were applying at that time, a year and a half, two years ago, to get the monies coming through.
We're going to be doing a presentation on the, on UEP-type grants as well, water sewer grants, next, next Wednesday as well, you know, to kind of walk through that process, to kind of give you an idea of what's available and what's not. So, we understand, yeah, but, you know, we do make, we do have money that's coming in, but at the same time, we want, we want to make the city council aware of what's available to us, you know, and we'll have our grant writers here that, that do that work for us as well, and be able to walk through that, and if you have any technical questions regarding the, the grants as well.
Yeah, I know my question was just with the grant writers that we have in-house. How successful have they been in the past?
Oh, very successful. I, we have a, a document that's out there online, and I provide a, a quarterly update on grants with what we've achieved, what we've received, and the outstanding grants that we have outstanding today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, thank you, Mr. Mason. As always, I just wanted to make a point of clarification. When you indicated that we have a grant writer in each department, that's not their sole duty is to write grants. It's just a part of what they do is, in their activities, they handle-
Correct.
Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear, that we don't have a grant writer for each department. We have someone that's task is to write grants in addition to other duties as well.
Correct.
Okay. And we don't have an independent grant writer for the city whose sole job is to write grants for the city of Cape Coral, with the exception of the Fire Department and the Police Department?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think, I don't see any other lights on. I think staff was looking for direction on this topic, moving forward to Hurricane Ian recovery update. Do we still want to do this every council meeting? We want to do it just the first council meeting of the month, the middle of the month? Does council have a, have a desire either way? Do we want to keep it the way it's going? Do we want to do once a month instead of twice a month? I believe we're getting it now, correct. So, I think staff was kind of looking for that direction. So, why don't we start with Councilmember Cowsen? We're just going down the line.
Twice a month.
Twice a month.
Twice, I'm, I'm good with twice.
That's fine.
Now. All right. So, we'll just continue the way we are. All right. Next item on the agenda is 9G2 permitting process update. Good evening, Matt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, Matt Grambo, Special Products Coordinator. Diving into my update and our current initiatives for the permitting process, we're still off to a very high-volume hot start to 2023. Year-to-date, we've received about 14,195 permit applications, and we've issued just above that, 14,269. So, we're in the black, we're issuing more permits than we're, applications that we're receiving. We met with the Lee County Building Department about a week and a half ago. This high, high permitting volume after Hurricane Ian is something that all permit issuing agencies are definitely experiencing after Hurricane Ian. The building official at Lee County had mentioned, they have about 23,000 applications under review, about 7,000 that have yet to be touched by staff members. So, everyone's extremely busy and working through the huge influx of building permits that are required after Hurricane Ian to the best of our abilities. And that's why we're really motivated to continue making improvements to our system. We're proud of the progress, especially with push-button permits that we've made thus far, and has enabled us to be on track for nearly 100,000 permits this year if the pace continues. But we're trying to find our quick wins, as well as our medium and long-term solutions to permitting here at the city. So, consistent with that, about a week ago, we issued, launched our new Master Single Family Residential Permit. It's been a success, very highly requested by members of the building industry in Cape Coral. So, we were happy to have that launched last week Monday. For our Ian paper permits, we've been developing our closing and transition project, process from the paper files with the initial four weeks of Hurricane Ian permits, transitioning all that data into the EnterGov system. We are creating two new systems to disseminate that information to the public, a stopgap measure that our Information Technology Services Department is working on through a Power BI report. That'll be accessible through EnterGov as a dedicated tile, so that folks can click on that and gain access to closed Hurricane Ian permit updated information, as well as our long-term strategy, which is, of course, to put all that information into the native EnterGov platform, so everything is associated with a property within the city. So, that's in the final stages of development. I'll be sharing some additional information on our status on the stopgap, as well as the long-term solution to that in my upcoming reports. We're continuing our work on our comprehensive workflow restructuring. The current phase that we're in on this process is working on transitioning from our municipal licenses that have been phased out, according to the council's past ordinance, as well as state law, well, by the end of June, to a state certification validation process. So, that is currently being developed in our test server, and will be tested by, say, our city employees over the coming weeks. So, that'll be a very big cornerstone accomplishment, as we really comprehensively restructure all of our permit works, workflows within the EnterGov system. We're also working on two different system performance improvement initiatives. We're working with our assistance team from Tyler Technologies on several scripts to clean up some of the data- to clean up some of the data that we believe is causing some slow performance in the review coordinator module. But we are also working with the developers of our ePlan review software, Blue Beam, to do a trial of the new 2021 version, which is a cloud-based software as a as a solution, S A S platform, to be able to see if that new version of the software and storing that data off-site is going to benefit our system performance. So very busy on the permitting process front. When it comes to inspections, the additional private providers that the city procured the services of, two of three started last week and we are above what our goal was of breaching over 900 inspections conducted per business day. Over the last six business days, we've been averaging 914 inspections every business day and that number will continue to rise as we onboard the third of our three new private providers. On the backend of all these private provider assistance initiatives that we're conducting, there's a lot of administrative work that's involved with that. Our city staff members are responsible for receiving a report from the private providers and then inputting that information into EnterGov. So to kind of bypass that administrative hurdle, we're working with Tyler Technologies, the developer of EnterGov, as well as our internal staff members to develop a system to provide direct access to EnterGov for the private providers so that they're able to go into the system and resolve inspections directly. So cutting out that step, making the process more efficient, and also enabling our internal staff members to focus on other tasks that are associated with hurricane recovery, especially the building inspections. So we're continuing to work with Tyler every week on that and we're hoping to implement the direct EnterGov access for private providers in the coming weeks. The big topic I'd like to talk about tonight is a change that we are hoping to implement on Monday, March 20th. And that will involve a digital submission requirement for registered contractors here at the city. The proposed change is on Monday, March 20th, and it'll be to have our registered contractors have to apply for for new building permits through the EnterGov CSS portal. It will not affect any pre-existing pre-existing permits that have been submitted or owner builders. It'll only affect new permit applications that are submitted by registered contractors. The owner builders will continue to have the ability to apply during our normal counter hours here at City Hall, per state statute. And any contractors that have previously submitted a paper application will be able to submit resubmission or revision documents also during our counter hours. So what is the purpose of this type of change? There's three purposes: efficiency, consistency, and then also space and cost. For efficiency, our major goal is to free up some of our staff time to work on back office permit processing. That improves the efficiency and the turnaround times for every single permit that is applied for at the city of Cape Coral. And we really need to rededicate some of our permit technician time to being able to do those types of tasks. As you can see in the chart in the top right corner of the slide that's on the screen, the orange is contractors, the blue is owner builders, and it's all the permit counter traffic since our initial change on the 17th of January, where we were only accepting paper documents and not issuing permits at the counter. You can see there is a downward trend in terms of the overall permit counter traffic, but also a downward trend in terms of the ratio of contractors dropping off paper permit documents and owner builders who are accessing the counter to do their their permit work. With that trend, we're still having days where there's 65 or 70 contractors who can apply through the EnterGov CSS portal, even for things like building permits, which are push-button if you apply online, but take a little bit of time, usually seven to 10 business days to process if applied in through the paper process. So increasing our dedicated back office permit processing time, increasing the utilization of our push-button permits, as well as implementing a single stream for our permit processing workflow, not needing to have a a paper stream and a digital stream. So efficiency is the number one goal with this type of change. Additionally, we're hoping to establish some additional consistency with other local permit issuing agencies, including Lee County and Collier County, which are two of the other really large permit issuing agencies in southwest Florida. Both Lee and Collier currently have this exact same requirement. They require registered contractors to submit new permit applications through their web portals. And there's a lot of reasons for doing this. It's it's considered best practice for a 21st century permitting division. It creates that single workflow stream. It allows additional concurrent reviews for the planning, the building, planning and zoning and stormwater reviews. And it's typically more efficient and a little bit better to manage and along with just having a consistent way of applying for permits throughout each permit issuing agency. And the third purpose for this type of change is just the the sheer number of of space, amount of space that's required to to manage permit permit document, paper permit documents. Currently, first floor City Hall, we have two rooms that are dedicated to both filing and organizing paper documents. It's about 500 square feet. You can see a picture in the bottom right corner of the slide that shows our permit filing machine. So it's about 500 square feet that that machine and the different setups for our paper permits take up in the in the building. And by phasing out paper permits, we would be able to remove this equipment and reallocate the space for additional workspace for permit technicians. Currently, we have seven job offers that are ready to go for our permit technicians, but we only have space for about two of those seven staff members. So we're being very creative, we're shuffling around staff. We're trying to find opportunities to to get every little bit of space out of our development services portion of City Hall on the first floor. But we're still really short of that additional workspace. And so by taking this action, making this change when it comes to paper permit documents, that'll enable us to reconfigure those spaces once everything is scanned and digitized and be able to create about five to additional additional five to eight additional workspaces right in the middle of our permitting service division area. Additionally, the existing filing machinery requires about $5,000 in maintenance every year and it's about a five to six-figure device to completely replace once it's mechanically insufficient for our purposes. So those are three major reasons for for proposing this type of change. What are the next steps? So the March 20th date is about 33 days from today. We have a we've put together a 30-day communications and outreach campaign. We have handouts ready to go for downstairs in City Hall. We have posters that'll be posted at the permitting counter. We're going to have an updated message board right at the front door of City Hall. We're going to be in direct communication with the CCCIA and Lee BIA to make sure that this change is disseminated to their members. We also are preparing a mass email to every single email address that is registered in the EnterGov system. And then, of course, we'll be doing our typical mix of social media, website, and press releases through our communications department. We're also preparing both an online and in-person training opportunity set for contractors to be able to learn about troubleshooting common issues with EnterGov accounts, be able to work one-on-one and staff in person, similar to what we did last spring, where they can come in and work with permitting services staff to get all set up and ensure that they know how to submit a permit application through EnterGov. And of course, as I mentioned, the key date is March 20th, just over about four and a half weeks from now. And with our current counter hours, with Fridays being closed, the last day of the current process would be Thursday, March 16th. After we implement this new process, we'll be working on through our comprehensive permit workflow restructuring to enable our owner builders to submit paper permit applications through CSS. We're creating a new permit type to allow owner builders with minimal permissions to at least start the application process. They still, per Florida statute, will need to make an appearance at City Hall, but that will be a review step in the workflow. So they'll still be able to benefit from a lot of the efficiencies that are allowed by EnterGov CSS. And then finally, once we are through with paper permits, we'll be able to scan all of our closed permit documents, get everything into the system and start clearing out space and utilizing that for ensuring that our staff capacity meets the needs of of our growing community. So with that, I'm Bill. For any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Matt.
Just a quick question. Have have we gotten any either proactive or or other feedback from CCCIA or Lee BIA on how the first nine days of the mastered single-family residential permit process has gone since it went live?
So I notified some members of the Lee BIA who are particularly interested and wanted regular updates on how the process was going. But in the first nine days since those have been live, we have not received any any comments or feedback. But on the back office portion of EnterGov, we have noticed that those applications are coming in. Folks are successfully submitting the mastered single-family permit applications.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Matt. I appreciate the update and all the hard work you and staff are doing.
Absolutely, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just to just to tag on to a little bit of what Matt was saying, moving to this digital submission has always been part of the plan. This is basically phase three. For the past few weeks, we've been allowing people to come in and still drop off their paper permits, but we were not issuing permits anymore at the counter because, as you may recall, this the coming to the counter and trying to get your permit there was taking up 83% of our staff's time and we were serving 17% of our contractors. So we wanted to try to get them shifted over to the digital submission. So the first phase was to try to encourage them to use digital by saying, you're not going to get your permit right away, so maybe you should just go ahead and start doing it then. We haven't seen as much of a positive result on that as we had hoped for. So we are moving into the digital. As Matt said, we're going to do everything that we can between now and then to give them an opportunity to make sure they understand exactly how to do that. And we will show them in person exactly how to do that process online.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, we will move on to item 10 is ordinance and resolutions. I think we'll take a 10-minute break here till 7 o'clock and then we will pick up with item 10 at that point. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. We'll move on to Item 10, Ordinances and Resolutions. 10A is Public Hearings. We're going to start with Ordinance 13-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 13-23, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral by Approving a Mixed-Use Planned Unit Development Entitled Bimini Square, Including Rezoning Property Described as Parcels of Land Lying in Block 87, Tract A, and Block 93, Cape Coral, Unit 5, and Block 91, Cape Coral, Unit 2, Part 3, as more particularly described herein, From the Mixed-Use Bimini Zone to a Mixed-Use Planned Unit Development. An Approval of a Master Concept Plan for a Mixed-Use Development. Property Located South of Cape Coral Parkway and West of Sunset Court. Providing for Conditions of Approval, Providing Severability at an Effective Date.
Before we get started, gentlemen there in the back, if you'd like to go out and speak, you're more than welcome, but if you could try to be quiet, please. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Struvey.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. For the record, Mike Struvey, Planning Team Coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. This case involves a PUD application, Planned Unit Development Application, entitled Bimini Square. Two property owners involved, represented by Avalon Engineering. The project that you'll be considering tonight is a mixed-use project located in southern Cape Coral, south of Cape Coral Parkway, and west of Sunset Court. Project consists of three separate areas that collectively total about 5.6 acres. Planned unit developments, at least those projects that are less than 10 acres, always are comprised of two different elements. You'll be reviewing both this evening. One involves a request to rezone properties. So the applicant is requesting to rezone from a conventional or existing city zoning district, the mixed-use Bimini zoning district, to a zoning district that will be unique for these three sites. In this case, a mixed-use PUD. And that means that the applicant has proposed dimensional standards and a schedule of uses, again, that are catered to these particular properties. The other request that is involved with a PUD is a master concept plan. And you'll also be looking at that, and you will be considering the master concept plan as well. And the master concept plan is just a general layout of the site, shows the general location of buildings, landscaping, stormwater, access to the site, and so forth. This is an aerial map. This shows the three separate properties outlined in red. You notice here that actually what appears to bisect the largest of the three properties, Pine Tree Court, that one-time city street was actually vacated back in 2016. So that no longer exists, and that right-of-way is now part of the applicant's site. If you look at surrounding uses, uses adjacent to the PUD area, or mainly non-residential uses to the north, and for the most part residential uses to the east, west, and to the south. Another aerial showing the three sites here and for purposes of describing these sites in our staff report, as well as in the conditions of approval that appear in the ordinance before you, we have numbered these three sites, from the largest site to the smallest site. Site number one is over four acres, and that's really where most of the activity will be in terms of this project. Site number one, which has frontage along Cape Coral Parkway, will include the mixed-use buildings that will surround a parking garage on this site. It will include other improvements too, like streetscape improvements. Site number two, which has waterfrontage along the Bimini Basin, will be developed with a waterfront restaurant. And then site number three, the smallest of the three sites, under a half acre, will be developed with a commercial parking lot, which we understand would largely provide overflow parking for the restaurant. This is a master concept plan that I alluded to earlier. We have done a little bit of annotation here just to make it clear which sites border the PUD area. On site number one, you see three different buildings, or the outlines, faint outlines of three different buildings, with a parking garage in the middle. You also notice that there is a small surface parking lot on site number one to the west of the site. Site number two shows the orientation of the restaurant. And then lastly, site number three to the west shows the improvements to that site, again, which will consist chiefly of surface parking. This is a landscape plan provided by the applicant that shows most of the landscaping concentrated around the periphery of the three sites. Site number one will have canopy trees along the periphery of the site, and will also include some landscaping elsewhere, especially in some common areas associated with this development. Site number two will feature landscaping primarily on the east and west ends, and particularly on the west end to provide for additional buffering between that restaurant site and a multifamily development immediately to the west. Site number three, again landscaping on the periphery, as well as a six-foot-tall opaque fence. That fence is recommended by staff as a condition of approval to eliminate the intrusion of headlights from vehicles as they enter and leave that particular site. One thing that this PUD will do is that it would approve a slate of uses associated with these properties. There are five different uses that are proposed, a commercial parking lot or garage, and then you see the other four uses identified here. No additional uses could be utilized on this site unless the applicant came back later before council and asked that this list of uses be expanded to incorporate that new This shows setback requirements for site number one and site number two. The setbacks for site number one are very similar to the minimum setbacks established for the mixed-use Bimini zoning district. Setbacks for site number two, particularly from the east and west property lines, are much greater to try to be more protective of residential properties that are located to the side of the restaurant site. This shows other standards associated with the PUD. I'm not going to go over each of these, but there are two I do want to highlight briefly. This PUD would approve about 218 residential units. That would pencil out to a density of 40 dwelling units per acre, which is fairly dense compared to our multifamily zoning districts. But for our mixed-use zoning districts, both the mixed-use Bimini and the South Cape zoning district, those zoning districts allow a maximum of 125 dwelling units. So it's sort of an intermediate density, if you will. The FAR for this project, which stands for Floor Area Ratio, which is a measure of how intense the commercial development on the site, is .25. And that's about average, actually, for most commercial sites in the city, and is considerably less than the maximum floor-area ratio allowed in the mixed-use Bimini zoning district, which is four. These are elevations associated with the mixed-use buildings on site number one. The top elevation is the north elevation, so this would be what you would see if you're looking at the building from Cape Coral Parkway. And this is an artist's rendering of the development on site number one, once it's finished, just to give you an idea of the architectural style or flavor that will be employed with this project. Elevations associated with the waterfront restaurant at the top. This is the front of the restaurant. This would be looking towards the water. The middle elevation is the south elevation, and this is what you would see if you were driving a boat up to the restaurant in the Bimini Basin. And again, this is an artist's rendering, showing different perspectives of the restaurant. The slide on the left shows the restaurant from Tudor Drive, looking toward the water. The slide on the right, obviously, is taken from the water, looking at the rear of the restaurant. And you can notice that the architecture of the restaurant is really oriented to try to take advantage of those views of this particular property. A little bit about access and transportation as it relates to this project. The parking garage on the site will accommodate about 500 vehicles. There is a condition in the ordinance before you that staff is recommending that the entrance, the entrance only to the parking garage, be limited to Tudor Drive. So what that means is, if the project was approved with that condition, is that cars could not enter the parking garage from Cape Coral Parkway. And that is strictly to try to address safety concerns, both for vehicular traffic and for pedestrians that might be walking on the sidewalk. We do have public works staff here, in case you have more detailed questions about that after my presentation. In terms of people leaving the garage, people could use either entrance, either leading out onto Cape Coral Parkway or onto Tudor Drive. There is also parking, surface parking, on all three sites. And in addition to that, the developer is proposing to add parking within the city right-of-way along a couple of streets. of streets. Now, sort of focusing our attention to the rezoning request. And again, this involves a rezoning from the mixed-use Bimini zoning district to the mixed-use PUD. This is a land use map. The subject property and all immediately surrounding properties have a South Cape mixed-use, future land use classification. Current zoning is mixed-use Bimini, shown in blue, and then the proposal is to rezone these three sites to the mixed-use PUD, which is shown in a blue crosshatch. We've analyzed this request, consistent with Section 3.4.6. In our land development code, we've summarized our analysis here. The proposed uses we find will be compatible with the surrounding area. All the uses that are proposed by the applicant in this case are allowed in the underlying mixed-use Bimini zoning district. Staff finds that the scale of development should be appropriate for the area and for these particular sites. The mixed-use buildings will be considerably taller than most surrounding development, but they will be similar to the adjacent Sunset Towers to the east in terms of their height. This project should serve several community needs. The city does need more commercial development, and what is a little unusual about this development is that the bulk of the commercial development will actually be office space. We also have a deficiency in multifamily development, so it serves a need there. The project will provide a parking garage where there will be parking available to the public, which is also a deficiency in this area of the city. And the project will provide waterfront dining, which will be an amenity that despite all of our waterfrontages is somewhat lacking in the city. Staff finds that this area is suitable for the proposed uses. The site number one, where most of the development will occur, is located at a signalized intersection. It also has frontage on Cape Coral Parkway, which is designed to accommodate higher volumes of traffic. And lastly, staff finds that the requested mixed-use PUD district should likely create fewer adverse impacts than the current mixed-use Bimini district, particularly if you're assuming that the mixed-use Bimini district was to be built out with the maximum entitlements allowed on that property, in terms of residential density and commercial intensity. This project is consistent with several plans, with multiple policies, both in the city comprehensive plan, multiple policies that are contained in the South Cape redevelopment plan, and it's also consistent with the economic development master plan, and we go into some detail in our staff report to point out where those consistencies exist. Staff is recommending approval of this project with conditions. The CRA redevelopment plan did require us to go before the CRA board to present this project, which we did, and at their November 2 meeting, the CRA board recommended approval of this project. We also went before the hearing examiner, as we typically do for these types of projects. This case was presented to the hearing examiner on November 15, and the hearing examiner recommended approval of the project with all staff conditions that you see in the ordinance before you. We did have two people that spoke at that particular public hearing. Neither individual indicated support or opposition to the project, they just had a couple of questions about different facets of the project. And we've received one email, and that individual also indicated neither support nor opposition to the project, and I will stand by in case you have questions for me later.
Thank you. I know open public hearing, is anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 13-23? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Gunter and members of the council. My name's Larry Nygaard. I'm president of Crown Development, the developer of the Bimini Square project. Today is really a landmark day for this project. I know that you guys have heard a lot about this over the years. I've been working on it almost three years now, and so we're really excited to be at this point. And I just want to say this publicly, too, before we get into our presentation. I worked with Mr. Stuvey and his staff, and people in the economic development department, and all throughout the city of Cape Coral, and they've been fantastic people to work with, very welcoming and accommodating to this project. So we've addressed a lot of issues, we've talked, you know, about a lot of different options, and tonight we're here to just kind of nail down the final details of what we've come to present. I'm going to have with me tonight a couple of experts. Lynda Miller from Avalon Engineering, she's been behind the scenes, working closely with city staff to help us put this project together, make sure it meets all the regulations that you have. I also have Yuri Byris, who's a traffic engineer. He's going to speak to an issue with regard to access to the parking ramp that we'd like to discuss, one of the conditions that showed up in our HECs report. We've also got Tyler Peterson, who is the architect. Any of those three will be available for questions, if you have any. We also have representatives from Lee Health, Mr. Ben Spence, who's the CFO. If any of you have questions about Lee Health and what they plan to provide in their medical office building, he's available, as well as Mr. Mark Kuroci, who will be representing Deep Lagoon, that's the name of the restaurant that will be on the waterfront. So we think we've got everybody here to answer questions that might come up. I'd like to turn it over now to Lynda Miller, and she can do a slight presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Lynda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, representing the property owners on the Bimini Square Plan Unit Development, PUD 2210. As Larry said, we're super excited to be here tonight. We've been working on this project for over a year with Larry and the design team. I did want to mention that we do have the architect for the waterfront restaurant here, and we also have the civil engineer for the project, if you have any questions for them as well. This PDP is requested because Bimini Basin zoning district has a restriction on it that says that only 20% of the linear square footage of the frontage along Cape Coral Parkway can be utilized as office space. And because of Lee Health and the square footage of the Lee Health Building A and some units within, some space within Building B, we are about 95%, so we needed to go through a PUD process to bring this project forward. The project consists of 13 parcels ranging in size from .23 to 1.74 acres, and it's got three distinctive site areas, the mixed-use building area, which is 4.26 acres, the waterfront restaurant area, which is .92 acres, and the restaurant parking lot, which is .39 acres. All the parcels are separated by the public street access, and five of these parcels were originally developed with residential buildings. As Mike said, this zoning district map is what we are right now, mixed-use Bimini, and you can see that all of the adjacent property owners in this area, to the south, north, east, and west of our property, is in the mixed-use Bimini zoning district. Same thing with the land use, we're in the downtown district, adjacent properties are also in that downtown district. We started this project in January with a big community meeting. We had a great turnout for that meeting, and we actually presented the project twice to the group of people that were there from us. We made a list of all of the attendees who would provide their email addresses, and we've been corresponding with them as we have over the last year, to give them updates and then to answer any questions that they may have. We've provided preliminary plans to them, and we also did elevations to them and addressed any comments that they may have. In addition to that, we met with the Sunset Towers group twice, Larry and I did, and also with the Bimini Villas. So we've reached out to the community quite a few times on this project. As Mike mentioned, part of the approval process is to go through a master concept plan approval. Mike gave you a lot of information about what the master concept plan does, but it does establish all the development regulations for this particular project. So it establishes the uses, which is the multifamily commercial, which is retail and office space. It gives you the restaurant use and also the parking garage use for this particular project. It also establishes the setbacks, the heights, the square footage of the buildings. So we go through that process with the city as part of this master development plan. We did a complete parking study. Desmond Design Management created this project, this parking study, and it looked at each one of the uses and the hours of operation, and came up with this chart of how many parking spaces we need per hour, and our project does meet the requirements. We have a landscape architect onboard as part of our team, and they designed a landscaping plan, which they submitted to the city as part of the master development plan, and worked with the city to create this final landscaping plan that we're submitting tonight. We also showed a landscaping plan for some of the other amenity areas that we're proposing on the project, and this is another one of the amenity areas that we're proposing. We also had an environmentalist, due of protected species, report for the project. We do have some burling owls nest on the site. Those will be permitted correctly through the environmental process. So working with city staff and the ordinance in front of you, we have some conditions that are part of this ordinance, and we're asking for a couple of changes to those conditions. We're requesting that the city council approve the removal of condition number 12. And number 12 said all vehicles entering the parking garage shall use the entrance to the south side of the garage along Tudor Drive. We would like the opportunity to access the garage from Cape Coral Parkway and enter and exit that garage site from Cape Coral Parkway, and also on Tudor Drive. We are also requesting that city council approve to modify condition number 19. Condition number 19 is for the parking lot area, and the condition is to construct a six-foot-tall opaque fence or wall around the perimeter of the site. And what we're requesting is that we install that six-foot-high opaque wall or fence on the western and southern side. We think that will block the lights coming into the parking lot, but it will also open up the site for the staff, the restaurant staff, that's walking to their car after hours. They will have visibility into that parking lot area. Our last request is city council to approve a modification to condition number 21. We have right-of-way improvements that are required as part of our project on all four streets, Cape Coral Parkway, Pine Tree, Palm Tree, I'm sorry, Tudor Drive, and Sunset Court. And the city's asked us to extend those improvements to the opposite side of the street as well, put in the curb, gutter, sidewalk, lane widening as required for this development. And we're just asking that we have the ability to get road impact fee credits for that. For this particular project, the road impact fee credits, just the road impact fee credits, not any of the other impact fee credits for this project, will be over $1 million. So actually, $1,052.82. The road improvements that are addition, that are requested additionally in condition 21, will come up to about $125,000. So even if we got road impact fee credits for the $125,000 additional work that we're doing on those road improvements, we would still be paying over $875,000 in road impact fee that would be associated with this project. At this particular time, I would like to bring up TR Transportation, so they can talk about the transportation for this project.
Good evening. For the record, Yuri Baika with TR Transportation Consultants. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Florida, and I previously testified in this forum before. I will briefly talk about the results of our traffic study that was prepared for this application, and then I'll go into the condition regarding the access to the parking garage on Cape Coral Parkway. So we prepared a traffic analysis for this zoning application. As previously mentioned, the request is to permit various commercial uses, as well as residential and restaurant uses. As part of the traffic study, we first prepared a trip generation analysis, consistent with the latest Institute of Transportation Engineers practices, to estimate the number of trips that will be generated by this development. We then took those trips and added them to the surrounding roadway network and conducted what's called a link level service analysis, or capacity analysis, on any roadways that will be impacted by this project. In our analysis, we included Cape Coral Parkway, which is an arterial, and Palm Tree Drive, which is a collector, and the results of our analysis indicated both of these roadways are projected to operate at acceptable level of service and with sufficient capacity in the future with the project traffic in place. As part of our traffic study, we also conducted intersection analysis on several intersections along Cape Coral Parkway. Those included Cape Coral Parkway and Palm Tree Drive, Cape Coral Parkway and proposed garage entrance, as well as Cape Coral Parkway and Sunset Court. And the results of our intersection analysis indicated that all these intersections will operate with sufficient capacity in the future with the project traffic added to these Now, briefly talk about condition number 12 of the staff report, which basically states that vehicles are prohibited from entering the garage directly from the Cape Coral Parkway, and it's in our opinion that this condition should be removed from this application for several reasons. First of all, there's already an existing right-in, right-out driveway there, as you can see. It's in the top right corner, it's Pine Tree Court, so there's an already existing intersection at that location, so it's not like we're creating a new leg to this intersection. Additionally, any inbound traffic that will be coming towards this parking garage will have a good side distance regarding the pedestrians that are coming along Cape Coral Parkway. So a side distance is not an issue when it comes to drivers regarding the pedestrians. I also want to mention what would happen if we don't allow traffic to enter directly our parking garage from Cape Coral Parkway. Then you might have an additional, you actually will have additional issues at the surrounding intersections, and you would actually force all the traffic that's bound towards this parking garage onto the surrounding residential areas and surrounding local roadways, including Palm Tree Drive, Tudor Drive, and Sunset Court. So that would create additional movements and traffic at those intersections, when it would be much easier for traffic to enter the parking garage off the main arterial roadway from Cape Coral Parkway. I also want to mention that typically parking facilities that have 500 or so parking spaces don't have just one ingress point to the parking garage. And I also want to emphasize that this parking garage entry will not be gated. So you won't have an issue where traffic would back up into Cape Coral Parkway when trying to pull into the parking garage. So if you have any questions regarding traffic or the analysis, I'll be more than happy to answer them. If not, I'll pass it on to Lynda, who will continue her presentation.
As part of this PUD submittal, we also submitted elevations, which the city got to look at and to approve as part of this, the ordinance here. So these are our elevations, a southern, north, and east and west elevation. We do have some really pretty pictures or color renderings that an architect has done for us. This is Lee Health, looking from Cape Coral Parkway onto Palm Tree at the corner there, and this is from the other side off of Tudor Drive, looking at the corner of the garage entrance, along with the residential wings. We do have amenities provided for this particular project. They will be provided on top of the roof of the parking garage. You can see a pool up there with the cabana areas and seating areas. Here's another view of that, so we have a parking garage and then the amenity area. We also provided elevations for the restaurants, and we do provide elevations on the north, south, east, and west part of the restaurant building. And we also provided a footprint of the building area that that talked about the seating areas for this and the back of, the back of areas for developing the food. This is an elevation of the restaurant looking from Tudor Drive. And then this is an elevation from the restaurant looking from the waterway. And you can see the mixed-use building behind it. As Mike mentioned, our project is consistent with six standards in the Land Development Code, Section 3.4.6. B. It's also consistent with seven standards that are in the PUD zoning district criteria in Section 3.4.7.1. It's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the housing element goal, the future land use element policy 1.6, 1.15K, policy 3.1, policy 7.3, policy 13.3, policy 14.3, and consistent with the conservation and coastal management elements. We are also consistent with the city's CRA requirements and those policies listed. As we mentioned, we are super excited about this project. We're requesting your approval, and we're just asking you to make those modifications to those three conditions that were, we requested. Condition number 12, to remove that condition altogether. Condition 19, to make, to change that from around the perimeter to the western and southern property lines. And condition 21, to request road impact fee credits for this. We're all here tonight to answer any questions you may have, and we'll stand by to answer those if you have any that you would like to discuss with us.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input on this project? Ordinance 13-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Yes, first, before we get into the discussion, we'll at least have a motion so we can have that discussion. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 13-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And I'll open it up for discussion. I just have one quick question before I open it up to the council. One of the things in our one-on-one meetings today, you had mentioned something in reference to the palm trees and the canopy trees. Your initial submission had palm trees.
Yes, sir.
But staff wanted to make it all canopy trees, I believe you said. Could you give us a little insight into those discussions?
So part of the mixed-use Bemini area requirement for development and part of the PUD process, it requires that you have street improvements and that sidewalks around your perimeter. And as part of the sidewalk requirement, they want you to shade that sidewalk area, and they require canopy trees. So our PUD shows street improvements with sidewalks around the perimeter and then lined with canopy trees as the requirement.
But originally on, you had the, the palm trees in instead of the shade trees?
Yes, sir. We did request that we had some palm trees, and we actually had all palm trees along Cape Coral Parkway and then wanted to put a few additional palm trees in. And the code requires us to do canopy trees.
The code does for the Bemini mixed-use zoning. But in a PUD, my understanding, maybe this is a question for staff, my understanding in PUD, pretty much we can craft this particular project any way we see fit. Is that correct?
To some degree. But in our, our PUD regulations, Mayor, under our open space requirements, we have standards. And standard number five addresses landscaping along sidewalks. And it says, "All, all sidewalks within a PUD site must be shaded by canopy trees." So we think that is a standard, at least from a staff perspective, that we have to administer. We do believe that there is more flexibility in substituting palm trees for canopy trees elsewhere in the project area. But on those sidewalks, we think that we are administering that section properly, and we want those canopy trees there because as those canopy trees grow, they're going to provide cover and shade for pedestrians, and that's something that we want to strongly encourage, especially in the South Cape.
But staff would entertain a possibility of doing the canopy trees around the sidewalk area to meet that criteria that you just mentioned. But throughout the rest of the project, they could do palm trees. Is that what you're saying?
So I, I think that would be something if, if council desired to give the developer more flexibility elsewhere in the project area. Yes, you could do that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Cummings? No? Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I would like to do what we, see what we can do to change that because we developed pallets for the city, and this part of the city, our pallets are tropical. So I would like to see more palms. We're going to have shade from the building. I mean, can you put the picture up of the face of the building on Cape Coral Parkway? So as you can see with the height of the building, the sun's going to rise and set in the rear of the building. Palm trees work better, as you can see in this artist's rendering. What we don't want to deal with is the problem that we have on Cape Coral Parkway today with the shade trees we have. They bust up the, the walkways, they bust up our curbing. We're limited to the amount of space. So what would happen is the trees would never even be able to develop properly because they would constantly have to be cut back so they don't rub against the building. So, you know, in this situation, we're not going to have the trees developed to even have a nice appearance. I'm worried about the appearance and the aesthetics. This project's going to add a lot of beauty to our downtown, and I want it to be to the, the best it could possibly be. And I think with the palm trees and the artist's rendering, the people that do this understood, you know, understood that, and they, and they put the best fit in. And the best fit in was these palm trees. They don't interfere with the building, they don't interfere with doing damage. And we just had a hurricane. What, what did we pile up just blocks from this location on skyline? Were trees. We live along the coast, and these trees bust up, and palms are the best fit. And I think that's why we created our pallets, because we picked our coastal areas to be palms. So if the developer doesn't have a problem, I, I would like to see if what we can do as a council in changing that so that they can add more palm trees because it's going to add to the beauty of the project. You know, we need to beautify our downtown, and I think this is going to be a great asset to our downtown, and I don't want to hold them back from, from making it look that much better. So whatever we can do in this council to change that, I want to, I want us to change that. I want it, this project can be the best it could be as long as the developer doesn't have a problem going back to that.
No, we'll modify to include the palms. That would be our preference.
You know, we, we spent years developing pallets so that we can have consistency throughout our city with future development. So why are we not sticking with the consistency already? So I think we need to make changes. Thank you.
I just want to remind everyone, there were about four items that they addressed. You know, the fence on the parking lot, access to Cape Coral Parkway, impact fee credits, and then the trees as far as the landscape design. I think I covered them all. So in our, in our comments, I think we need to make sure we address that. There's been a motion in the second on the floor to approve what was brought for us from, from staff. The modifications weren't a part of that. So I think part of the ordinance, part of the PUD. So we need to make sure while we're having our discussions and having our comments that we weigh on those topics as well.
Okay, then you want me to finish?
Sure.
I'm not a traffic expert, but we heard from one. I believe that limiting access doesn't improve anything. I can see myself as a driver having two resources, two entrances and two exits is, is better. It's more choices. If you give more choices to all the available traffic, then there's less congestion. That's what I would think. So I'm for that. I'm also for the change on the wall because I'm worried about public safety. And I see the headlight situation, but there's streets there with cars driving that are having headlights. We're not building walls along our streets to block headlights. So why do we need to build walls around the parking lot? To me, that creates a safety issue. I know a lot of people would, would not feel safe walking in a parking lot surrounded by a wall. I mean, so I have no problem with that. And as far as expanding the office space, was that the third item?
Impact fee credits.
The impact fees for the improvement that's done outside of their envelope. So in other words, across.
I'm willing to waive the impact fees. For what this organization is bringing to our downtown, the impact that they're going to have to the downtown is, is awesome. Partnering up with, with Lee Health, I think is, is tremendous. Adds great value to our city and to our downtown. So that's such a small price for us to pay for the impact that this organization is bringing to our downtown. So I have no problem with waiving them impact fees. Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to ask that question as far as what the motion was in the second because I knew there were these four points that we were talking about. So I'm glad we clarified that. With the way that motion is, if we want to make these changes, how would we want to vote on the current motion? Or would the motion maker, after hearing this discussion, amend their?
Amend the motion.
Yeah, okay. At first, as far as the parking garage goes, I was a little concerned about pulling in from Cape Coral Parkway because we don't want to create more traffic in an area that's already congested. But after seeing the designs and speaking with developer that it's going to be a clear shot on a road that is already there and already has an entrance and exit, I don't believe I have a problem with that. After hearing that we're going to do something with the parking lot and speaking with the developer that it's just one side that we're not going to put a wall on, and there's a safety issue there, or potential, I'm okay with not having a wall on the front end so that anyone who's working for the restaurant will be able to see into the parking lot that they're coming, you know, with a pocketful of cash tips that night, that they don't have to worry about that as well. I do believe we need to partner with the developer and the credits that they're asking for, for improving the area around. It's something that we should do. We want to be favorable to, to development and get some development started and done. I don't see us hindering it. And I guess the fourth one is the trees. Looking at the picture, I see a palm tree that works, a canopy tree here. We all know what happened on 47th when we had the canopy trees there. They uprooted, we have sidewalk issues now. So I don't, I don't believe a canopy tree is the best fit there knowing that we're having a, you know, a four-story building that'll provide the shade and the walkway. So I'm okay with pretty much everything they've asked for tonight as well as giving them the opportunity to provide what we have this picture here in front of us as a finished product.
About the impact fees, did you mention that?
Yeah, I, I think the ask for that isn't much for a development of this size.
I missed that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's only going to beautify the other side of the street. So let's, let's make it happen.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. I would certainly agree, understanding the travel of the sun and the height of the building. Just the height of the building itself is going to give shade to that sidewalk area in front. So to have beautiful palm trees, as are depicted in, in that rendering, I would agree that palm trees are the right choice there. I think that the, the credit given toward impact fees of $125,000 are certainly a fair contribution on our part to additional beautification of the area that wouldn't normally be their responsibility that we're asking for. And the trade-off to give them that, that credit, I think, is in, in the city's best interest. I do have a couple of questions. It's a gorgeous pool and cabana area on the roof. Who uses it?
That will be, that will be restricted for residents if you were thinking you could go up there.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to have to move.
Who said I'm not going to get one of those residences? Come on. So, no, but I, I love the building and the residents, but I just wanted to make it clear, is that, is that public use? Is it just the residents' use? And so obviously it'd be some type of restricted access, key card, something that would allow only the residents to use that. So that's awesome for those residents, great attraction for them to, to occupy one of those dwellings. One of the concerns that I've got is how do you deal, since this is a no-gate entry into the parking area, how do you deal with 20, 218 dwelling units and a probably a relatively high propensity to those people having more than one car each? So how do we limit it to only 218 spaces for those residents?
So what our, our plan is, is we have 500 stalls. The parking study that we did analyzed the parking garage use by the hour, by the user. And that's what we use to determine the size of the, of the parking ramp. We also set aside 200 parking stalls that would be reserved. So of the 500, there'll be 200 that'll be reserved, and those would be one per apartment unit. So everybody there will get a reserved spot. That will still leave 300 parks for public use. And you're right, if somebody has two cars, or maybe sometimes they'll have three if they have guests, they'll have to find another spot among those 300 to park their car. But the, the wonderful thing is, when you dig into the parking study, is the match, the, the times that the residences use the parking are not the times that the clinic uses the parking. And so that's why we can do multiple uses with a ramp that's 500 parks. So that's the theory behind it. And that allows us to locate stalls at the elevator entrances on each level so that we have a certain number of reserved spaces by the elevator entrance to the housing. Same will be true with Lee Health.
Okay. And the, as far as the, the entry and multiple entry into the parking, that, you know, what currently is Pine Tree Court right now, which would become the main entry off of Cape Coral Parkway into, into the parking ramp there. Right now, there is no ability for westbound traffic to turn left at that spot. They would have to go to the traffic light and either make a left on Palm Tree and come in and around Tudor, or they'd have to make a U-turn and come back and come in through Pine Tree or through Sunset Court.
That's correct.
There is no intention on, on cutting through to make another left-hand turn, like there is a left-hand turn on Sunset Court right now, is there?
No, no.
All, all that being said, that I'm, I'm okay with multiple entries on the eastbound, you know, thoroughfare of Cape Coral Parkway. And so I think I've hit all the, all the points on where I would stand on all those.
Okay. I think staff has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, I have to be sworn in. Kimberly?
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Persia Zambrano, Polyworks Transportation Manager. I just want to be, bring to your attention that what the applicant is requesting for road impact fee credits, that is not road, road impact fee creditable. So you're welcome to give them an incentive. But if you waive the $120,000 and give them a credit, the general fund will have to pay the road impact fee. The reason being, road impact fees are spent in adding capacity to the system. They are not adding a travel lane. They're widening the existing travel lane, but they're not adding capacity for the reason that those improvements are not road impact fee creditable. Okay? And those are lane widening, curb, gutter sidewalks that are required as part of certain developments in the city. So I just want you to be aware of that. of certain developments in the city. So I just want you to be aware of that.
So with that being said, could they apply for an incentive through Capes Compete?
Any other incentive, but not road impact fee credits.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Okay, I guess I'll weigh in real quick. Pretty much everything that they asked for, really, I don't have a problem for just putting the fencing on one side. That's still going to block the headlights from the people parking in the parking lot as far as the condominium units that are there. And if we take down the other walls, I think it will enhance the safety, actually. So there is a clear line of sight to the parking lot and other areas that would probably be more beneficial. As far as the access from Cape Coral Parkway, turning in, I would have a problem if that was an area where you had to pay to park. But since this is going to be open through traffic and open to the public, I am surprised that I could probably make an argument that it's probably more of a detriment to pull out from that location out into Cape Coral Parkway versus turning from Cape Coral Parkway where you already have position on to turn in. So with that, I don't have a problem with having both accesses in and out at that location. Impact fees, I would be, I think, $125,000 was, $120,000, $125,000 was mentioned. I would be, I would definitely entertain some type of incentive where we could give that monies back. Apparently, the impact fees aren't applicable, so we can try to give it back in a different fashion. In the tree scenario, I've always been a better fan of palm trees than canopy trees. But like Councilmember Welsh, and I remember when I was District One Councilmember, you walk down on 47th or any of those streets right off 47th Terrace, those canopy trees, all they're doing is tearing up the curbing, tearing up the sidewalks. When you look at the rendering, there's going to be a close proximity from the curb to the building anyway. So a canopy tree probably would do more damage in the future than a palm tree. So I would, I would give the developer the latitude to put palm trees in on this project instead of canopy trees. So that's where I stand. Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I didn't have a problem, obviously, with the impact fee credits. We'll have to look at something else, if it's TIF or if it's, you know, incentive money or whatever. So I'm sure you're agreeable to that part of it. Walls on just the one side of the employee parking garage, yes, it makes complete sense for safety. I did have some concerns about the entry point off of Cape Coral Parkway, because there's no egress there. I mean, you're coming to a stop and you're turning in, and that's a, that could be a fast stretch with that light being green through there. So that was a concern of mine at first, because it'll be a busy place with residents, the health center, people coming in and out of the restaurants. So probably presents some more challenges, maybe, than we're seeing right now. And the other factor we'll have to look at, too, is at some point, as you get closer to Coronado and we get a new eastbound bridge, that's all going to be three lanes there. So that's going to affect traffic movement, too, over the next six or seven years on how we look at the road. But it's a great project. Excited to see it. The conditions were workable for everybody up here. I think you're getting your consensus where you want it. So good luck.
Okay, I don't see any other lights on. If there's no other council discussion, then I think that what I would ask the motion maker, if he's willing to modify his motion. And maybe can we list a dollar amount as far as the, some type of a incentive, and then staff can figure out the best way of doing that?
That would, if we wanted to just stipulate an amount, that would be sufficient for us. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So I will-
Yeah, I'll amend the motion. What was the dollar amount that we were looking at?
It was $125,000.
Okay. So I'll amend the motion to include the conditions with the availability of looking at our options for reimbursement of $125,000, whether it's through incentives or another program.
I'll second that.
And how about impact fees, access, the fence?
Well, I think, I said it was, you know, they had three conditions there, right? It was the fence, which covers one of them. It was the road entrance, which is number two. And then the third one would be the $125,000, right?
Yep.
You're missing one.
And we have the trees.
Well, the trees weren't one of the conditions, other than, are we putting it in as a condition?
I think that the developer was asking for to be able to utilize palm trees instead of the canopy trees.
Was that one of the conditions?
Yes.
Not the original conditions.
I don't remember that being a condition. That was something that came up during our discussions today. So how would you address that? Just reviewing the site plan, perhaps?
Yeah, Mayor, it was not a condition per se, because staff used that as a requirement. So it probably should be a condition of approval to clearly provide them relief from that provision if that's what council wants to do.
Okay, then we will add the fourth condition of palm trees instead of canopy trees along certain parts of the project, correct?
Second that.
Did we cover all the?
Yep.
All of them? Okay. And does the second agree?
Yes.
Whoever the second was.
Mayor?
Yes.
Somewhere along the way, we saw the three or four requests or requirements.
Yes.
I'm having a hard time finding that.
That was in their presentation, I think.
And I'm believing what we're needing is to remove those conditions. I think that the motion that we need is to approve with the removal of certain conditions that were presented. And I can't find that.
So I do have slide number 11. If they can pull it up for you. Oh, it's here on the screen now for you. So what we were asking for is the total removal of condition 12, which is the no access to the parking garage off Cape Coral Parkway. We're asking to modify condition number 19 to have the six-foot-tall opaque fence or wall on the western and southern sides only. So we would be screening against the residential to the west on our side and also screening along Tudor Drive to those residents. And then the other condition was condition 21, which gave us some ability to pay for those road impacts that we're going to do, those road improvements that we're going to do on the opposite side of the street. Those were the three that we were requesting, and then we mentioned, talked about the landscaping during meetings.
So it seemed like the motion would then be to approve the ordinance with the removal of condition number 12, if that's our, you know, choice, and with the modification as requested on 19, and then the approval for $125,000 worth of assistance that would offset their total impact fees for the requirement that we're asking for in condition number 21.
Right. And the palm trees.
And the palm.
Where are the palm trees in any of this? And so, and then the addition of-
Instead of canopy, modify where?
Be trees to allow palm trees.
Are we specifying the type of palm tree, or is that not part of the? Well, I know a lot of developers like to, if it's a palm tree, there's the sheet palm trees that you continue to use. So if we're giving them a ability to not do that. Since we decided to be landscapers here and spent 30 minutes on it, I figured that we'd make sure we did it right.
Okay. I'm just hoping that helps, that we actually have those that we can word the motion based on what's being asked for.
Okay. So I will turn to the motion maker.
All right, I got this.
All right.
I can do this. Okay.
We have all the confidence in the world with the Councilmember.
Amending the motion to include removing condition number 12, modifying condition number 19, modifying condition 21 to include some sort of incentive package to cover the $125,000, and adding a condition that allows for palm trees instead of canopy trees.
Yes. I second that.
Councilman Steinkie, is that, take care of the hard burn a little bit?
Councilmember Cummings has seconded the motion.
You did good.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Done.
And just for the record there, Councilmember Steinkie, I know you like that pool. That is your district. You can live there.
I was always hoping I couldn't. I'm not doing another condition that he gets to live there.
I think he'll still like my vote, though.
Yeah. Okay, Madam City Clerk, I think we've had enough discussion on this topic, and we have a motion and a second a couple of times, and it's been modified. So I think we're clear on our motion. Could you call the roll, please?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to ordinance 15-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 15-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 84-05 as amended by ordinance 60-13, which approved a planned development project in the city of Cape Coral, Florida, entitled South Winds Commerce Park, on property described as a replat of lots 22 and 23, block 1548, as shown on the plat of Cape Coral Unit 17, recorded in Plat Book 14 at pages 23 through 38 of the public records of Lee County, Florida, together with a portion of sections 5 and 8, Township 44 South, Range 24 East, a subdivision located in the city of Cape Coral, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Property located along Stonecrest Lane between Pandella Road and Northeast Sixth Street, approving the removal of property described as Lot 15 in the South Winds Commercial Center subdivision, as more particularly described herein, from the planned development project, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on request and conditions of approval, providing severability and effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Struvey.
Good evening again, Mayor. For the record, Mike Struvey, planning team coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. This case involves a publicly initiated PDP application. The owner and the applicant is the city of Cape Coral, and the city is requesting to eliminate Lot 15 from the South Winds Commerce Park PDP. And the purpose of this amendment is to allow the future construction of Fire Station 13 on Lot 15, as well as several platted lots to the south of the site. And in so adopting or approving this PDP amendment, then the city could seek entitlements through the site development plan process without coming before you, again, in terms of amending this PDP in the future. This particular property is located at 671 Stonecrest Lane, and this is an aerial showing the South Winds Commerce Park subdivision. It's outlined in yellow, and you'll notice that Lot 15 is located near the southeast end of this subdivision. Properties surrounding this particular subdivision largely consist of industrial development to the east and to the west, with residential development located to the south. This is a zoning map. This site has industrial zoning, and all properties within the subdivision also have an industrial future land use classification. A little bit of background on the South Winds Commerce Park PDP. This subdivision was approved by PDP back in 2005. Originally consisted of 30 commercial lots, private right-of-way track and two stormwater tracks. The project was amended in 2013. That particular PDP amendment approved several deviations at that time to the city's land use and development regulations. It also modified a couple of existing conditions of approval as well. This is a portion of the South Winds Commercial Center subdivision plat, and the area outlined in red to the north shows Lot 15, which is requested to be removed from this PDP. And then to the immediate south, you see several small platted lots, which collectively this site will provide the building area for Fire Station 13. This project is currently going through city review, through a second review right now, and this shows the layout for Fire Station 13, very similar to recent fire stations that have been permitted in the city, both along Chiquita Boulevard and more recently along Nicholas Parkway. We've analyzed this request, consistent with section 3.4.8, found in the Land Development Code for PDP amendments. Our analysis is summarized here, and very briefly, this project complies with all standards appearing within this subsection. The city is the owner of the site and they're the sole owner of the site, so they're eligible to file this request. Removing this particular property from the PDP project area will not negatively affect other sites. All the sites act independent of one another. And lastly, removing Lot 15 from the PDP project area will not unfairly or inordinately burden other owners with any remaining conditions appearing in either of the two development orders. Staff's recommending approval of this request. The hearing examiner recommended approval of this request following a public hearing on January 3rd. There were no speakers at that particular hearing, and we have received one phone call recently just from one individual wanting more information about the project. And I'll stand by in case you have questions.
I will now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 15-23, please come forward.
Good evening. Lynda Miller, Vice President of Avalon, representing the Cape Coral Fire Station or Fire Department on this particular site. The reason why we're taking this lot out of the PDP is so that we can replat it with the lots to the south of us and create one legal description for this development. We will also be going through a land use change and zoning change for this site, too. We have submitted site plan for approval of this fire station, and the Fire Department would like to get underway quickly with this project. So we request your approval for this PDP amendment. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 15-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 15-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Can we move on to ordinance 52-22? Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 52-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use for property described as lots 12 through 16, block 3100, unit 62, Cape Coral subdivision. Property located at 1917 Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date. date.
Good evening, Mr. Daltry.
Good evening. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, planning team coordinator with the city's planning division, and my credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. This is 52, ordinance 52-22, which is a privately initiated future land use map amendment involving just over a half acre of property. That's lots 12 through 16 and block 3100, unit 62. Requests to amend the properties from, that's a single property, from commercial professional to the multifamily residential future land use. The property address is 1917 Southwest Santa Barbara Place. Site's located in central Cape Coral, just west of Santa Barbara Boulevard, north of Veterans Parkway. This is an aerial of the subject property, the subject property and the surrounding area. Subject parcel's an undeveloped piece of property that is bordered on three sides by developed multifamily residential structures. Across the street to the west is Santa Barbara Place. The following maps will show the land use of the subject property and surrounding area. Map on the left is the current future land use of the property and the surrounding area. Subject property is hatched. The entire block that this property is located in is commercial professional, indicated in red. Properties to the north in brown have multifamily residential designations. Properties also to the north, to the east, and to the south of commercial professionals indicated in red. Directly across the street from the subject property in yellow are properties of a single-family future land use classification. A fire station is located just outside of the 500-foot buffer to the southeast. The map on the right shows the proposed map if this amendment was to be adopted by council, what the impact on the future land use map would be, and with that, subject property would be changed to multifamily as indicated in brown. Some background, central Cape Coral, again undeveloped. This block has been commercial professional since 2010 and was rezoned to commercial in 2011. All the existing multifamily developments were in place at that time. There are eight residential structures on seven properties, which are present in this block, so roughly the block's about halfway built out. No commercial activity has occurred or been proposed for this block since 2005. And again, as you saw in the aerials, multifamily residential developments are adjacent to the property. This may be familiar to certain members of councils. This was presented to you back on November 2nd. After some lengthy discussion, you had asked the applicant's representative to canvass property owners on this block to see if additional owners would join into this request, and so this case has continued to this year. The outcome of that was that the applicant's representative had found four property owners who support the request and want to be amended to multifamily. However, given the advanced state of this request, and that's being brought forward to you for adoption, it was desired that these other properties be amended in a following ordinance. So there'd be a separate ordinance in the future, amending these properties to multifamily. Now, this map shows the four additional properties. So the property in brown is the subject property before you today. The properties in red are those property owners who agree with a future change to multifamily in a different ordinance. Including those properties, you're looking at close to half of the entire block being multifamily. You see on the roughly, call it the southern third and the southern half of the frontage on Santa Barbara, those properties, mostly vacant, would not be part of a future request to multifamily. However, the fact that we do have a larger contingent of properties being brought forward for multifamily has caused staff to review our previous recommendation for this, which I'll get to in further detail. When we reviewed this, we looked at our various comprehensive plan policies. Policy 1.7, the future land use element, is the multifamily siting criteria, whereupon this request met two of the four and partially met a third. Policy 114 is the city's commercial siting guidelines, whereupon there's eight criteria. This site met three of those and partially met an additional two. So that kind of falls into what we would consider a fairly debatable standard as far as the appropriateness of either multifamily or commercial. And what had led staff previously to recommend denial was the fact that this property alone, without any other properties being changed to multifamily in the future, would represent a spot land use, which would affect the commercial viability of other properties if approved. Now, with new information, with additional properties on this block being added in a follow-up ordinance, the spot land use issue becomes moot. And so with that, we find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan, particularly with the upcoming amendment with additional properties. Staff recommends approval. At the August 3rd, 2022 meeting, this was presented before Planning and Zoning Commission, who voted narrowly to recommend approval of the request. Again, this is about, I had a previous supervisor who would call these cases "jump balls," you know, it's very clearly, very closely 50/50. This is emblematic of that. We've received no public correspondence as it pertains to this ordinance. I'll stand by for any questions.
I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 52-22? Please come forward.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkis, BGM Consulting, here on behalf of the applicant for this case. Staff did a great job. You guys were actually, did the best thing when you continued this and told me to go out and contact the six properties around it, finding that four of the six of the pre-existing residential had no idea that their land use and zoning was changed in 2010 and 2011. And since they just made massive improvements due to storm damage on a property, they were very much in favor of going back to multifamily land use and zoning. So their new additional investments in their property would not go awry as pre-existing non-conforming uses. The only thing that I would like to point out in staff's presentation that maybe could be construed as something a little different, the P&amp;Z vote for 3 was based on the original presentation of just one lot. They did not make that on this whole northern end of the block with two ordinances going forward. I think if that presentation was part of what they were voting on, I think that vote may have been different, just to point that out. So they were not voting on the application that staff is now recommending going forward With all of that information in place, and knowing that the northern end of the block would, by a vast majority, seven of the nine properties would support a change to multifamily land use and zoning, we respect for requests you support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 52-22?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Can move on to ordinance 3-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 3-23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from light industrial to public facilities land use for property described as lots 24 through 29, block 1548, Cape Coral Unit 17, and Lot 15, South Wind Commercial Center. Property located at 2025 Northeast Sixth Street and 671 Stonecrest Lane, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Anthony Santor, Associate Planner with City Planning Division from Development Services. My credentials are in file at the City Clerk's office. I'm here today to talk to you about ordinance 3-23, which is Flume 2225, which is a city-initiated future land use map amendment, which is in correspondence to a case you have heard previously tonight, which is the PDP amendment for the Stonecrest property. This is the future land use amendment for Fire Station 13. So the address for these two parcels is 2025 Northeast Sixth Street and 671 Stonecrest Lane. It's located along Northeast Sixth Street, just south of Pandella Drive. It's approximately 51,000 square feet, or roughly 1.18 acres, and it is in the urban services infill area. So the amendment request is a small-scale amendment to the future land use map from light industrial to public facilities to facilitate the construction of Fire Station 13. We'll go briefly through this. The site does have access to all utilities, including water, sewer, and irrigation. It is currently vacant and undeveloped. The zoning was changed in 2010 from R3 to corridor, and then from corridor to industrial in 2019. Similarly, the flume was changed from commercial professional to Pine Island Road District, and then from Pine Island Road District to industrial in 2019. Here we can see the site, which you had seen previously, the two parcels, one located along Stonecrest and the other along Northeast Sixth Street. And here is the current zoning, or current future land use map for it, which indicates the industrial land use, and here's the recommended public facilities for these two parcels. So we did analyze this per LDC Section 3.5.2(c)1, which looks at the city comprehensive plan and its applicability to the proposal. What staff found is that the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals and policies of the plan, which we will find a little bit later on. We also examined LDC Section 3.5.2(c)(2). Whether or not the amendment protects the health, safety, and welfare of the community, staff did find that the amendment is consistent with this criteria as well. We also examined LDC Section 3.5.2(c)(3), that the proposed amendment in all consisting zoning districts and the underlying permitted uses are compatible with the physical and environmental features of the site. Staff found that the proposed amendment is consistent with this criteria. And 3.5.2(c)(4), that the range of zoning districts and all allowable uses in those districts are compatible with the surrounding uses in terms of land suitability or density, and that a change will not result in negative impacts on the community of traffic that cannot be mitigated through application and development standards in the code, which staff found was consistent with this criteria as well. We also examined LDC Section 3.5.2(c)(5), that the site is capable of accommodating all of the allowed uses, whether by right or otherwise, considered existing or planned infrastructure for roads, sanitary and water supply systems, stormwater parks, and et cetera, and found that the proposed amendment was consistent with this criteria as well. And then the final factor, which is LDC Section 3.5.2(c)(6), that's other factors that were deemed appropriate by the commission and city council. Obviously, for council, that is to your determination. For the Planning Commission, there were no other factors that were deemed appropriate or made part of their motion. We also examined the comprehensive plan, which examined Chapter 1 capital improvement elements goals, and found that the amendment was consistent with the goal of Chapter 1 for the capital improvement element goal. We also examined Chapter 4 Policy 1.15 in regards to land development regulations implemented with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the standard uses and densities as described in the table, and found that it was consistent with the goal of Chapter 4 Policy 1.15. We also analyzed the city impacts of the conversion from existing industrial to proposed public facility. And as you can see, obviously, there's no change in dwelling units or populations or school impacts, as neither one of them are residential or have the ability for residential dwelling units. What we did find was that there was a reduction in water usage, sewer usage, and solid waste, but a slight increase in trips given the nature of the fire station use itself. We also had this examined by the Fire Department and the Police Department for their impact on city resources, and found that the property is currently served by Fire Station Number 5. Obviously, when Fire Station 13 comes online, it will be served by Fire Station 13. The future development is expected to generate less than 15 calls annually, with minor impacts, with no negative effects on service development for the area or the city, and with a large positive impact effect on service, fire service delivery for the northeast section of the city. For the police impact, we found the property is served by Police Patrol Zone North District, Zone 1, that the proposed development will have a negative impact on service demand anticipated, with a potential reduction in police calls for service in the area over the long term. And there were some slight additional concerns that the location will influence traffic flow on Northeast Sixth Street, Del Prado Boulevard North, and Pandella Road North, and that residential properties in the immediate area may generate noise and traffic-related nuisance complaints after hours in relation to the fire trucks coming and going. So based off of all that, it is our recommendation for approval. This was heard by the city planning department, or, excuse me, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended approval as well, and to date, staff has received no correspondence in regards to this case. I will stand by for any questions. Thank you.
I will now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 3-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 3-23?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Move on to ordinance 5-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 5-23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial activity center to Burnt Store Road District land use for property located in Section 7, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Section 29, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Section 32, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, and Section 20, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Amending the future land use map from commercial professional to burnt store road district land use for property described as lots 1 through 24, block 4291, Cape Coral Unit 61, for property described as tract A, block 6114, Cape Coral Unit 97, and for property located in Section 7, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Amending the future land use map from multifamily to burnt store road district land use for property described as blocks 6171, 6172, 6173, 6174, and 6175, Cape Coral Unit 98. Amending the future land use map from mixed use to burnt store road district land use for property described as Lot 31, block 5522, Cape Coral Unit 91, tract A, South 40 subdivision, lots 16 through 20, M-2, 6, 10, 14, and tracks A and B, West Chester Estates, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, block 5523, Cape Coral Unit 91, and for property located in Section 18, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Section 19, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, and Section 30, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Amending the future land use map from open space to burnt store road district land use for property located in Section 20, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein. Amending the future land use map from public facilities to burnt store road district land use for property described as lots 27 through 30, block 5522, Cape Coral Unit 91. Amending the future land use map from single family to burnt store road district land use for property described as blocks 6169 and 6170, Cape Coral Unit 98, and tracks C and D, and lots 21 through 54, West Chester Estates. Amending the future land use map from single family/multifamily to burnt store road district land use for property described as lots 28 through 33, block 4303, Cape Coral Unit 61, lots 17 through 46, block 6300, Cape Coral Unit 83-1, lots 1 through 51, block 6301, Cape Coral Unit 83-1, lots 1 through 71, block 6303, Cape Coral Unit 83-1, tracks 1 through 5, block 5520, Cape Coral Unit 91, lots 1 through 26, block 5521, Cape Coral Unit 91, lots 1 through 26, block 5522, Cape Coral Unit 91, and for property located in Section 7, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Section 19, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, and Section 30, Township 43 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing severability and an effective date.
Turn it over to you, sir.
Good evening again. For the record, Wyatt Daltry, planning team coordinator with the city's planning division. My credentials may be obtained at the City Clerk's office. Ordinance 5-23 is a city-initiated future land use map amendment, which involves just over 1,200 acres from multiple properties in northwestern Cape Coral, which are close to Burnt Store Road north of Amburran Parkway. The request is to amend several future land use classifications, basically the commercial activity center, CAC, commercial professional, CP, mixed use, MX, multifamily. activity center, CAC, commercial professional, CP, mixed use, MX, multifamily, MF. Open space, public facilities, natural resources preservation, single family residential, and single family multifamily to the Burnstall Road District future land use. These sites are located in northwestern Cape Coral. Again, as you can see, with that linear shape to this, approximate to Burnstall Road. It's Burnstall Road District, that stands to reason. These map series are going to be split in a series of two maps each. This is the aerial of the northern part of the Burnstall Road corridor, Burnstall Road District. The areas are in light blue, indicated in red. The 500-foot buffer is used for notification purposes, it has no impact on the use of property. As you can see, it's, for this map anyway, on the west side of Burnstall Road, largely involving what we consider larger parcels for Cape Coral. As we head south, particularly once we go south past Calusa Parkway, Janus Road, Sand Road, we start including some areas east of Burnstall Road as well. Would say, the, this is this property here, some former borrow pit mining operations on the east side, the city's 320 acres that they own that came out of the team in 491 land purchase. And then culminating near the intersection of Amburran Parkway and Burnstall Road, though there will be some discussions about this larger piece on the east side later on. The current and proposed future land use map series, so the map on the left is the current designation, the map on the right is the proposed. So as you can see, this has at least the commercial activity center, which is in lavender, a single family multifamily in this off-white color, commercial professional in red, mixed use in orange, all being changed to the burst. As you go further south, the same thing occurs. Additionally, some multifamily, some single family properties also being changed to the burst. Some background, since at least the northwest vision plan in 2016, Burnstall Road's been identified as a future economic corridor for northwestern Cape Coral. As you're aware, Burnstall Road is a principal arterial highway with access leading out of the city and eventually to I-75 in Charlotte County. North of Amburran Parkway, the roadway is adjacent to large and platted tracts, which is a rarity for Cape Coral. As we know, Cape Coral is a platted land subdivision, with most of the properties subdivided into two lots or just under a quarter acre size. Purpose of the Burnstall Road District is to promote mixed use, professional, commercial, industrial development on Burnstall Road. As we, as was adopted by council back in December, we had adopted a text amendment that created the Burnstall Road District. Existing residential in this district is to remain conforming. However, no new standalone residential is permitted. Furthermore, certain developments such as self-storage facilities are prohibited within the Burnstall Road District future land use classification. Now, as I just alluded to, the actual text of the Burnstall Road District was adopted in the comprehensive plan back through Ordinance 12-22. To create a new designation out of whole cloth, as we're doing here, involves several steps. This is the future land use stage of converting Burnstall into the next economic corridor. The following steps after this, if this is, if this is transmitted today and adopted in the future, will be to create zoning districts and then to map those zoning districts. So this is partway through the process, there are no development plans identified. Outside of really high, you know, the proverbial 10,000 square foot, 10,000-foot level, we're not discussing uses all that much. The question today is whether or not these properties are, are consistent with and appropriate for the Burnstall future land use classification. This proposed amendment is supported by Policy 1.15R of the future land use element, which is the Burnstall Road District. It's further supported by Policy 3.3 of the future land use element, which directs the city to pursue future land use map amendments to increase non-residential land. I've discussed this in many forums, how the city is deficient in commercial, mixed use, industrial properties. This is one of those opportunities where we could turn a lot of those into non, and a lot of residential land into non-residential and mixed use properties. This amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. This was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission on January the 11th, 2023, and at that meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6-1 to recommend transmittal. I want to stress particularly for, for the public and perhaps for our newer council members, this is a transmittal hearing, as this is a large-scale future land use map amendment. It's not the adoption that this, if transmitted by council tonight, will go to state and regional agencies for their review. Upon the review, we'll return back before council and to have this discussed for adoption, probably sometime in late March or in April. With that, I'll stand by if you have any questions.
Thank you. Now, a public hearing, if there is anyone wishing, wishing to speak on Ordinance 5-23, please come forward.
Good afternoon again, or good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurkis, B.J.M. Consulting, here on behalf of Acorn Management Development, the owner of the 110 acres, the southernmost end of this district, and on the east side of, of Burnstall Road. The, the language associated with this that supports this future land use map amendment, we believe, is very good for the super vast majority of the properties along Burnstall Road. The, the ability to do residential as part of a vertically integrated mixed use is a very great, good goal for the City of Cape Coral, and it will enhance the, the look of the corridor. So we have no problem with that in the vast majority. It's this 110-acre parcel with the great depth away from Burnstall Road that pretty much will not allow, the market, the market will support vertically integrated mixed use that far away from the corridor. We originally wanted to ask to, for a motion to continue this for a month, and, and allow us to work with staff to determine how best to deal with this market-driven change before we transmit. Staff has informed us, they would rather us just request to remove the property from the future land use map amendment, they don't have a problem with it. The problem remains, as would hold its existing land use designation of CAC, which the owner is fine to develop under, this is a good mixed use development, prop, land use that would allow us to develop the thing, in, under market conditions that will support the development of the whole 110 acres. So respectfully, based on that, that, that information, we respect the request for you, if you vote to transmit tonight, you, you remove us from the map amendment. Thank you.
And if I could just add on to that, I'd also like to say, yes, staff has no objection with the removal of that property.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 5-23?
Thank you for taking my, taking time this evening, council and mayor. My name is Christine Cassell, and I live on Janus Road. I am a local homeowner on Janus Road, and my bubble is about to burst. Let's use the word. My backyard is in the buff, my entire house is in the buffer adjacent to an 80-acre parcel that the city intends on changing, the land usage, which we all know will eventually be a zoning change. For 19 years, my husband and I have owned our home, owned our land, and it wasn't until 2020 that we had the opportunity to move into our brand-new home that we built, with our dogs, our horses, our donkey, to enjoy the lifestyle that we enjoy. We all understand we cannot stop growth, but we wish to have a say in the matter and the way it is depicted and decided upon. With over 2,000 new residents expected in our area per a previous meeting in January, we are all aware the reason for this change and the request for the change is to actually rezone. We understand there's future use zone areas right now, but zoning will be the absolute determination. Planning and zoning does not request changes haphazardly. As property owners, we feel it's our right to know what companies and what contacts have been sent out for indications of interest to be put on these parcels. This happens to be my backyard. Zoning changes are already being worked on for this area. I did receive an email from the city that says we are working on zoning districts now. Use is considered for the new district not an exhaustive last, including public and utility institutions like schools, restaurant uses, hotels, banks, pharmacies, professional uses, retail of all sources, warehousing uses, places of assembly like community centers and churches, and mixed use buildings. We're still working out all the details. Well, planning and city hasn't figured out what the details are, but we would like to know what they are before this is fully approved and goes forward. Fill the parcels with light industrial, and you're looking at a Viscaia, a Pine Island Road. Industrial parks are known to have chemical runoff that will destroy the surrounding wetlands and migrate to surrounding preserves. We have a negative impact, and will have a negative impact on our wildlife and our water quality. There is no area similar to this in Cape, we understand that. With all the anticipated growth, where will there be space for the families and safe places for them to enjoy family life and the great outdoors? We could use hiking and bike paths, parks, and kayak areas. The area does accommodate water. So many animals have already been displaced from buildings and the hurricane. Let's do our part as a community to preserve our sacred wildlife. We chose our quiet area to live and hope to keep it that way. Noise, pollution, and lights from industry will change the way of our lives. In anticipation of the 200-plus residents that are expected in this area, the values of our homes and properties, we implore you to consider alternatives to keep our rural area similar to the lives we live now, and the way we have be custom, become accustomed to living it. No berm, no landscaping, and no wall is going to change the lights, the noise, and the traffic. Let's work together to meet the best of both worlds. You have all received my correspondence. Since the correspondence has been sent, I have received an additional 10 people that are opposed to having this burst area developed. We have received one person that is for. I have told everybody on the list, plus the others, that I will let their voices be held, heard tonight, and I hope you take into consideration the damage this is doing to our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, council? I've lived in Cape Coral for 30 years. I've owned three different properties.
State your name, ma'am, please.
My name is Elizabeth Jorgensen, and I live on Sand Road. Well, I don't live on Sand Road, my farm is on Sand Road. I purchased the property with hopes of building a house and having a farm. I own an endangered species, I breed it and develop it on my farm. Your proposal for changing the area and maybe taking away the agricultural rights that I have on my property will change an endangered species, and maybe my ability to help it develop and repopulate in Florida. One day, I hope to build a house on my property, but the way that they're saying they're going to stop future residential growth on these acreage parcels, that is not why I built the property, not why I bought the property. I stayed in Cape Coral five years ago because I was able to find this acreage, and now you're talking about changing it. To me, that will drive out the homeowners who have kids, who have animals, who have sheep and cows and horses and donkeys and chickens. You have such a limited available agricultural area in Cape Coral, and now you're talking about taking more of it away. To me, that's not acceptable. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name's Donna Barley, I live on Sand Road. I got a letter, I'm in one of the buffer areas. Okay, so 14 years ago, we stood up here and fought for that particular area in the northwest Cape to remain agriculture, because you wanted to put an industrial park on our street. And at that point, it, it became, you guys saw that that was a good thing that we had going on down there, it was a rare thing, and you shut it down, and we were able to continue to build our five-acre estates, our homes, and that whole area has remained rural since then. Now, like Christine said, we can't stop progress, but we do want to make you aware of what we have out there. I mean, when we were dealing with this 14 years ago with Wyatt, it was like, what do we do with that area out there? Because it's agriculture, and you guys are a city, and there's no place in Cape Coral for, like she said, sheep or donkeys and, and the whatnot, but there is, that's where we live. So we're, as, when I saw this coming through for this land use change, the first thing that went through my mind after fighting this fight before with the city was 1,200 acres that you guys want to put together in one land use, and what can you do with it? It's like a kid in a candy store, you got 1,200 acres, how are you going to chop it up into these commercial enterprises? So I'm just asking that, please, when you do this, to consider what is out there now and what you're taking away. I mean, there's only so much land, like Wyatt said, and this is the last big piece, so does it all have to go into another warehouse or another commercial enterprise? Can you think about what we're losing instead of what we're gaining? And there's precious little left in the city, and so that whole area out there, there's an opportunity here, yes, to get development, yes, to make progress, but also, yes, to preserve something. And one of the things we're preserving is our way of life, and one of the things we're preserving is just the land itself. At P&amp;Z, I said even New York City has Central Park. So we know that the zoning is being worked on now. I mean, we're not, we, we understand how this works, you're going to pass the land use, and the zoning's already being worked on. So the next opportunity we have to speak will be at the next P&amp;Z meeting that we'll have a public hearing on this, and by then it's done. By then, you guys already know what you're going to do, you already know what you want to do, you already have your investors, you already have people wanting to buy up these properties to go commercial. So we're hoping that tonight by speaking, we can give you a little food for thought between this meeting and that meeting when the zoning is already a done deal. So I appreciate your, your consideration in this and, and what we're going to lose as opposed to what you're going to gain. You know, just because the area is undeveloped doesn't mean it's uninhabited, you know? So, and the, the people Christine was, were talking about, I think it was up to 76 people that live in the northwest Cape, close to this area, have signed that, saying that they oppose this. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Stephen, I live on Old Burnstall Road. Like many others here, I am opposed to big building up in the area. Little about me, I'm a lifelong resident, I was born and raised here. After high school, joined the military, did four tours, I was wounded three times. After the military, decided to move back home, wanted a little bit of a slower pace of life. We got lucky enough to where my family and I, we found a, a 12-acre parcel out in northwest where we run a farm now. It's a produce farm, I sell some local markets, and a lot of the land around me is... We got lucky enough to where my family and I, we found a 12-acre parcel out in the northwest where we run a farm now. It's a produce farm. I sell some local markets. And a lot of the land around me is undisturbed, basically. I'd love to keep it that way. I know some of the parcels in this proposed, in this is, some of them are privately owned. But I know a big chunk of it is owned by Cape Coral. And I would love to see Cape Coral designate that as a preserve or keep it undeveloped for something. There's many wildlife back there, as everybody knows. There's also a slough that runs through there that I require, that I need for the rainwater to run off in the summertime to refill my irrigation reservoirs. Like I said, I'm just asking you to please take into consideration all the people who live back there and what we do back there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, Stephen.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Christine Goddard. I live on Sand Road. I've lived in Cape Coral since 2012. When we first moved to Cape Coral, we bought a house on the water, Gulf access, but it wasn't quite for us. It was a little too busy, too much traffic, too noisy, and we found five-acre parcel out on Sand Road, and that was our paradise. We built there. We've lived there for three years. When we first moved there, we had three sand currents, three sand drains that frequented our yard on a regular basis. Then we had two, and now we have none. I don't see them. The growth has either killed them because of the traffic or whatever the circumstances, but they don't come to my yard anymore. So, I guess I understand growth, and the city planner used the exact phrase, it's a rarity for Cape Coral to have this area. I really want you to be proactive and think about what you really want that land used for. The expansion of Burnstour Road, it's not even complete yet, and it's very dangerous. Just the addition of a few single-family housing, homes in themselves, has made it scary. I'm scared to pull off Sand Road onto Burnstour because of the traffic. And if you add all this commercial development, multifamily housing, you really need to take a good look at the traffic flow before you make any big decisions on this. I'm in total agreement with the other residents that live out there. It's our quiet place, our peaceful place, and we just hope you respect that in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Linda Miller, representing the property owner of two parcels along Gator Slough. I'm just following up with what Mr. Mazurkowitz said regarding this property. We've been working on a master development plan for this project for quite a few years and refining it that is consistent with the current land use, which is the Commercial Activity Center. If we had this Burnstour Road put on this property, our property has depth of 2,500 feet. We just do not see commercial going all the way back through this property. Multifamily, we were proposing a mixed-use development already with commercial along the front and along the waterway and some tie-in of some residential above the commercial. But we also found that we needed a mixed-use, we need a multifamily component to this, separate, a standalone multifamily component for it to work. And having the Burnstour Road overlaid on this entire parcel, we wouldn't have that opportunity, and we would have to have it only in a compound-use building with commercial uses on the first floor. So, we just don't see that this is feasible for this property, and we are requesting that you remove these two parcels out of this request. And I do have something that I need to upload for the owner.
My name is David Famy. I'm the owner of the 110 acres of property north and south of Gator Slough on Burnstour Road. I appreciate the time the mayor and council will give me to voice my concerns on the land use amendment being discussed today. I would like to discuss removing my property from this transmittal hearing today, which is changing the land use and zoning on my property. I was never contacted by anyone from the city on this change. This land use and zoning change will greatly affect my property in a very negative way. This proposal forces residential buildings to be incorporated into the commercial businesses on the first floor. The entire depth of the property is a half a mile deep, which is 2,500 feet in depth. This change being proposed is not financially feasible, talking with the developers and the planners who have an interest in being involved in this project. The city should know this project is coming in the future. I've been working with the city's Economic Development Department, the Utility Department bringing in water and sewer, and also city staff and the attorney when I gave the city a conservation easement over the Gator Slough. I was also in front of city council before the Hudson Creek Pinnacle Development Hearing just north of my proposed project. I would like to have enough time to work with the city staff and be able to build a beautiful project that the cities and the citizens would enjoy. The Gator Slough Waterway has over a mile of waterfront between the north and south parcels, and I feel it's very important to work with the city to get this project right for both the city, myself, and the developers and builders who are interested in this project. The land use amendment will handcuff development of this project. Businesses like Starbucks and Jersey Mike Subs don't want to be 2,000 feet back into the project. This was the feedback I got from the leading national developers, that there will be pushback from renters not willing to live over businesses, is what I was told by the developers. The proposal today includes all of my property, mixing residential with commercial, causing parking problems, delivery problems, and loading problems, just to name a few. Again, I would like to remove my property from this transmittal hearing, and if the city does not remove my property from this transmittal hearing, I would ask that the city gives me 30 days to work with the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Witt. I'm an attorney with Han Lodger &amp; Parks who represent Mr. Famy and the company that owns the property just north of Van Buren. We've brought up a site plan here. This consists of two parcels divided by the Gator Slough. As Mr. Famy mentioned, he's worked with the city and granted a conservation easement to the city of Cape Coral at the city's request over the Gator Slough. I don't want to reiterate things Mr. Mazurkowitz has asked, Ms. Miller has asked, and now Mr. Famy. This property needs to either be removed from the Burst District or, at the very least, give us time, continue this to a date certain, instead of voting for the transmittal tonight and give us right around 30 days to work with the staff. The plan, which we wanted to share with you that's being developed now for this project, has a lot of commercial. That's closest to Burnstour Road in this corridor, and a lot of retail shops, restaurants, et cetera, along the Gator Slough. Think waterfront dining and shops and all of that. The yellow that's shown on the site is what is, at least now, was going to be around 1,100 units of standalone multifamily, which would be prohibited. So, voting this out tonight and sending this on and then coming back and adopting this is going to completely decimate the project that's been years in the making. So, we would ask that, and I don't believe there's pushback from city staff, that this be removed, and if not removed by vote tonight, that you would not vote to transmit and give us time to work with staff and the other stakeholders in the area, the other property owners that are being affected by this, to come back before you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during a public hearing?
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is George Wine, and I live at 3908 La Vida Way. La Vida Way is a small, 12-property community, which off of Old Burnstour Road. The township, the town's property is directly on the back of my fence. The acreage that you have is exactly in back of my fence. And of course, we moved there, we bought there because we have a beautiful view. It's green. It's wonderful. What's being proposed is being, this humongous thing is going to be in our backyard and as well as all our neighbors in that neighborhood. We just can't see how this, this is, this should be done. We're totally checking that entire area, and it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing for ordinance 5-23? See, a non-public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve at least ordinance 5-23 for transmittal, at least for conversation?
I will make a motion for discussion.
I got a couple of quick questions. Could you put the map back up that you have, the subject parcels in the buffer, 500-foot buffer? I think it's going to be somewhere around five or six. Yeah, that particular picture there. Could you explain a little bit the difference between the subject parcels and the 500?
Certainly. Certainly. 500-foot buffer actually is something we use, okay, it's showing good, is something that we use to indicate those properties whom we've sent notification to. There is no impact as far as land use, applying that on the property, or any sort of special planning and zoning or permitting regulations through that. It is merely used to indicate what properties we've sent notification, mainly letters directly to property owners. Whereas the subject parcels are those properties that we would change if this was to be transmitted and later adopted in the future time.
And the reason I ask that question, you look at the dotted line segment, and I know we had a few residents from Janus Road and Sands Road. It looks like, and for those of you that may not know, where you see all the waterway in the middle, upper-left there on this picture, the dotted line just south of that, it's almost running parallel with, I believe, Sands Road there.
Yes, and if I could clarify that, what we are proposing is 400 feet of, this is a large, I think it's a quarter section, 160 acres, more or less, property. We are only proposing the easternmost 400 feet that is adjacent to Burnstour Road is being changed through this. For whatever reason, the buffer is following the parcel boundaries, not the separated 400-foot portion. So, really, the line, the notification should have gone more, you know, parallel to Burnstour Road, roughly 900 feet of Burnstour Road, the 400 feet that we'd be changing, plus 500 feet of notification. I guess the, while it did confuse matters, I guess the silver lining is that we did expand the notification further than we would have otherwise. But the fact is this, we're not going to be doing anything related to Burnstour Road for these properties back here. They are too far away from Burnstour to really be used in a commercial way. As I reckon, as I recall correctly, one, certainly one, if not both, have a single-family, multifamily designation, which would permit for residential development, which, given how far those areas are from Burnstour, is really the best development for them.
So, there would be no impact on the zoning or future land use on the properties that are on either side of the road, on Janus or Sands Boulevard, that just this buffer zone is identified for notifying the residents?
The only properties that have frontage on Sand and Janus Road that we are changing also have frontage on Burnstour Road, and all of those are undeveloped.
Okay. And then, I guess, the parcels that are on Janus Road to the south, those parcels would butt up to the larger gray area there in the middle?
Correct, much of which is owned by the city.
Right, correct. Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, one of the complexities that we have here with a land use change of this magnitude is that, no matter how hard staff tries, that we're not able to contemplate all the issues that arise. But having said that, what I see here is an opportunity to get ahead of it rather than do it retroactively like we have done up here on council several times over the last several years, when we go back and spot address issues where the land use has came forward and doesn't necessarily match up with the zoning. For example, we've had individuals up here, Mr. Mazurkowitz and others, that have, it seems to have been successful working with staff to have their properties removed from this land use. I do understand that some of these individuals are, they take issue with properties that aren't their own, and so they won't have those same rights with regards to asking that it be accepted. But there are others, I believe, if I interpreted correctly, that do have some that fit within that realm, one of them being agriculture, I believe. So, what I would ask, based on that, is that we continue this so that I have an opportunity to work with each of these individuals and assess with staff their properties respectively, so that we can, if necessary, and staff and us collectively, the council, determine that, then we're able to exclude that from moving forward so that we're not dealing with it retroactively in the future. So, that would be my desire. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. The explanation as it relates to the notice boundaries and that they should have stopped much further east than they do helps me a lot. I do rely upon my gut a little bit, and my gut tells me, after seeing the proposed use in future of the lower block that's being, a request to be removed, where the Gator Slough runs through and what is planned for that area, I would be concerned at this point that this could conflict with what has been being worked on for a number of years. So, while the explanation on the boundary of notification on the, you know, on the northern end of that, of what you have on the screen right now, makes me feel better, I'd like to have something make me feel better about that parcel on the lower end, and I don't know exactly how that comes about. But it looks like that was pretty well thought out, and if what we're proposing here negatively impacts the thought and work that's been done up until now on that lower parcel, then I'd have a concern about that.
Okay, I mean, I agree. I think that, you know, for me, I was a little concerned with the buffering, how it was up on Janus and Sands Road, and I know a lot of those parcels are at least five-acre lots, you know, so I was a little concerned. I know a lot of them are zoned agriculturally, and I know that, you know, a lot of those residents up in that area probably bought those parcels because of the zoning that's up there now. But with that being said, the lower parcel that you mentioned, Councilmember Stanky, I kind of... I kind of feel the same way. You know, here you have a property owner that is in the process of developing a plan, plan development for that particular parcel. I would be, I'd be in favor to support the transmittal, move it forward as long as we remove that, that particular parcel. That's one alternative, or the other alternative is to hold off and continue it for 30 days and, and come back. One of the concerns that I do have, and maybe Madam City Attorney, you could, you could weigh in on this, you know, I know that we want to put in place some parameters as far as the types of construction in this area. If we are going to continue this and prolong that process, is there any way possible that we could put some type of either a moratorium on any type of development due to pending litigation, or anything that we can do in that footprint while we're going and going through this vetting process that Councilmember Long had mentioned?
The city is able to enact a moratorium within a defined, for a defined time and for a, in a defined area, if you're, for example, developing regulations. In order to enact that, you would have to do that with the same, the same legal niceties of a zoning ordinance, so it's going to take two hearings and things of that kind. So, I mean, we could do that, it's, it's up to council's pleasure.
Okay. All right, I was just curious if that was an option, and how long that, that process is. Councilmember Long?
I think to that point, and Ms. Baron, I think you may be able to help me out here, do we have something in the pipeline that regards something that achieves that same effect with regards to an ordinance change that would preclude specific uses on that Burnstall Road corridor? I thought we had had a discussion about that possibly being in the pipeline.
Something similar to what we did on Pine Island Bridge.
Exactly the same, it's one sentence on ordinance change, I brought it up a couple of different times with staff. I thought that, I was told that it was scheduled for P&amp;Z.
Yes, coming to council, yes, you're talking about that ordinance change that with the line that's put in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I believe that's scheduled coming up for maybe the next council meeting, we'll can see where that's at.
Yeah, I thought I had recalled that that was being addressed, but it was just for, I believe, one specific use, so if you had something other, else in mind, then I guess we could theoretically add it at that point in time, but I do believe that that's being worked on, and I would assume that these guys know more than anyone, so let's let them tell us.
Yeah.
There is an ordinance coming forward that'll address specific uses, is going to planning and zoning on Friday, just a weird day, I know. It'll be introduced to city council on the first and heard on the 15th.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess the question is, do we, do we want to move forward with it, or if we want to, since it looks like something else is in the pipeline, hopefully, within 30 days, today's the 15th, I believe, you know, hopefully we'll have something in place that would help mitigate some of that development until, you know, until we get this finalized or fine tuned, so I think that's the question. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I think the best solution, I think there's so much moving along here, we were confused about boundaries. Y'all had your concerns about property rights and what's going to be available, we have a section, 110-acre section down here that wants to be pulled out from it. You know, you know, we're trying to have a discussion now, not really having all the appropriate information, I think, to, to make the right decision, or at least as close to the right decision as we can make. I think Councilmember Long, meeting with the residents, moving forward with continuing discussions on these, on these other pieces, I think the best answer right now is to continue it, and to continue it, it'd have to be to a date certain, right? 30 days?
Well, the reason we used to do it by, the reason we generally would recommend a motion to continue to a date certain is because previously it would eliminate an advertising requirement, but there was recent case law, I believe you all received your email memo about that case law that's, that says you have to do the advertising anyway. So, the advantage of, if there is one, of a date certain is you'll know when it's going to be brought back, but the clerk will be advertising it again. But if you don't know how long it will take staff to get together with these people and try to see what they can come up with regarding their property, and you want to just say in approximately 60 days or something like that, I mean, we could say that, because now you have to advertise it again anyway, due to that recent case.
Does that your recommendation to approximately 60 days?
Well, I mean, I've been telling you for years, advertise it to a dates, you know, do it to a date certain, but, you know, the case came down a week ago, that altered the advantage to doing that.
Mr. Mayor? Looks like staff has a few more comments for it, so I see everybody scurrying around.
Well, if I, if I may, and this is really going to speak to Dolores's point, I mean, what we'd be looking at with the new case law that came out as far as date certain and the need to re-advertise, it takes us a minimum of 21 days to get an ad, to get the title, do the necessary prep work for letters, submitting those letters, and getting the ad to the news press. That's, that's three weeks right there, independent of however long it takes staff to accomplish what we need to accomplish in order to get there. So, you're probably looking at 60 days, probably, if you're looking at it, at a time in the future, so I just wanted to put that out there.
I don't have no idea why it would take you that long to get an ad in the news press, but we can have that discussion later on, because
We'd be happy to have that discussion.
I guarantee I can call you, I can call tomorrow and get you an ad in the news press, but that, that being said, you know, you know, I think a lot of us up here are not in a position to make a decision that we feel comfortable with, and because of that, I think the best solution is to continue it.
Are you going to change your motion? Were you the motion maker?
I was, I was the motion maker for discussion.
Yes.
So, I'm going to make the motion that we continue this for 60 days.
Second.
Who was the original second?
That's true, it was not me.
Councilmember Cummings.
Do you agree with that change in the motion, Councilmember Cummings?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's see, I got Councilmember Steinke.
Could we then have a reread of the motion we're going to vote on?
Didn't you just do this?
Yeah. We, we're going to continue the discussion for 60 days, and I'm sure that Madam City Clerk is going to give us an approximate day there for our next meeting.
So, when I looked at the timeline, that brings us into April, I have a regular meeting on April 19th, so it's a little bit more than 60 days.
So, the date certain would be April 19th, and you're okay with that as the motion maker?
Yeah, the motion would be to continue ordinance 9-23.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
9-23 to April 19th.
And did you say 9-23 or 5-23?
It's nine, he's correct.
He said nine.
I'm sorry, it's five.
It's five.
It's five.
Yeah, 5-23.
5-23, okay.
All right, so we're going to continue this ordinance 5-23 until April 19th, 2023. Does the second agree with that? Councilmember Cummings?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, we're good, right?
I can
Do we need a motion, I mean, a roll call? Call the roll?
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to ordinance 9-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 9-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan by amending the future land use map from commercial, professional to multi-family residential land use for property described as lots 21 through 29, block 1073, Cape Coral, unit 23, property located at 706, 712, and 718, Southeast 7th Street, providing separability and an effective date.
Thank you, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Nice to see you again. Anthony Santora, Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. My credentials are on file at the City Clerk's office. I am before you today to speak, to speak in regards to ordinance 9-23, which is Flume This is a applicant-initiated small-scale future land use amendment, where the applicant, plural, is for applicants, all are property owners and are all part of the application. This is for three parcels addressed as 706, 712, and 718, Southeast 7th Street. This is located in the center of Cape Coral and city, the old city center room, just east of Cultural Park Boulevard and along Southeast 7th Street, so just north of City Hall here. The approximate size of all three combined parcels is 47,414 square feet, or just over an acre. It is in the urban services transition, and the request is for an amendment to the future land use map from commercial, professional, to multi-family. A little bit of background on the sites, they are three parcels, as indicated, they're along a local roadway on Southeast 7th Street with primary frontage along South 7th, Southeast 7th Street, with secondary frontage for one parcel along Cultural Park Boulevard. All parcels are currently vacant and undeveloped, and all sites do have access to utilities, including water and sewer. For the zoning, the properties were originally zoned multi-family when the zoning map was introduced, and they maintained that all the way until 2009, when they were zoned professional. And similarly with the future land use map, when it was first adopted, all the parcels were designated as multi-family, and then they converted to commercial, professional in 2003. So, the applicant has stated in their LOI that future development on the site will be new multi-family apartment housing. And here we can see the sites here outlined in blue along Southeast 7th Street, just east of Cultural Park Boulevard. Here we can see the existing future land use map, and it's the three parcels highlighted again in blue, designated as existing commercial, professional. You see a remainder of the block is existing multi-family, that was commercial at one point, and then it has slowly, as the market has come through for more multi-family, has slowly converted back to its original multi-family use down the block. So, the proposal today is to turn these three sites back into multi-family land use, and as part of this, staff did analyze the requirements of the LDC and the code, and we analyzed Section 3.5.2(c)(1), whether the proposed future land use amendment is consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use designations of the city comprehensive plan, which it is consistent with, and you will see that a little bit farther in the presentation. We also analyzed Section 3.5.2(c)(2), whether the proposed amendment protects the health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the staff believes that this is consistent with that criteria. We also examined Section 3.5.2(c)(3), whether the proposed amendment and all consisting zoning districts and underlying permitted uses are compatible with the physical environmental features of the site. The site is relatively flat, it does not have adequate depth for commercial, as we will see when we get to the comprehensive plan, and the RMM and RML zoning districts are both compatible with the physical features of the site and the proportions of the site, so it was consistent with that criteria. Also, we examined Section 3.5.2(c)(4), whether the range of zoning districts and all allowed uses in those districts are compatible with the surrounding uses in terms of land suitability or density, and that a change will not result in negative impacts on the community of traffic that cannot be mitigated through application of the development standards. In this code, staff found that it was consistent. The majority of the area to the west and to the east are developed out with primarily single-family, or, excuse me, multi-family homes, mainly duplexes in the immediate area and duplexes along Cultural Park. There is a small apartment complex that is just to the south in one of the existing commercial spaces, and they're all typical commercial, are typical duplex development, typical multi-family development that we've seen, and this, the RMM and RML are both consistent with those. We also examined Section 3.5.2(c)(5), whether the site is capable of accommodating all of the allowed uses, whether by right or otherwise, considering existing or planned infrastructure for roads, sanitary and water supply systems, stormwater parks, et cetera. We did find being existing parcels that are within the center of the city with access to all utilities and have been planned for commercial development, that they are consistent with the ability for the uses to be provided and for all of the existing infrastructure to meet those required uses, so it is consistent with that criteria. We also examined Section 3.5.2(c)(6), other factors deemed appropriate by city, by the Planning Commission and by city council, obviously the council would make its decision. This was heard by Planning Commission, and they deem no other factors appropriate in their consideration. We also examined the comprehensive plan in regards to the applicability of this amendment. We found that Chapter 3 of the Housing Element Goal is consistent with this amendment, where there is a need to provide good quality housing in safe, clean neighborhoods, offering a broad choice of option in both type, single and multi-family, and tenure owner and renter occupied to meet the needs of the present and future residents of the city. This will allow for the opportunity for more multi-family to be present within the city, which does add to both the pool of residents, the type of residence, either owning or renting, and the type of applicable dwellings, in this case, multi-family. We also examined Chapter 4, Policy 1.6, and found that the amendment was consistent with that, and that is that the city will continue to promote healthy communities and diverse housing stock. Currently, the city is underdeveloped with multi-family units, and the addition of land where you could provide more multi-family units serves to provide that diverse housing stock. We also examined Chapter 4, Policy 1.7. This is in regards to multi-family, or multi-family siting based off of four primary guidelines, which are proximity to major roadways, proximity to non-residential land uses, transitioning from commercial uses to less intensive uses, and assemblage opportunities, and adjacency to existing multi-family residential. When examined as the three sites themselves, they meet currently all four, and when examined throughout the block, they do better and meet even more of the guidelines. So, we found that they are consistent with goal for, of Chapter 4, Policy 1.7. We also examined the Policy 1.13 and Policy 1.14 of Chapter 4, which are commercial siting guidelines, to determine whether or not commercial land was more appropriate at this location than the proposed multi-family. What we found in examining the site is that the site is consistent with two components of the guidelines, that being compactness and the ownership, having all been owned by one applicant, and being relatively rectilinear in shape and flat. What we did find also is that the site is inconsistent with six components of the guidelines, those being major intersection, adequate depth, integration, assembly, intrusion, and access. Even if we were to take the two parcels to the south and consider them as part of the assemblage and part of the examination for the area, we still find that they are inconsistent with those six components of the guidelines. Therefore, in our, our recommendation, the site is not a good candidate, it's time for commercial or professional development. We also examined Chapter 4, Policy 1.15b, the examination of densities for multi-family residential, and found that the proposedment, the proposed amendment of multi-family is consistent with goal of Chapter 4, Policy 1.15b. We also analyzed the city impact of the existing commercial, professional land use and the proposed multi-family. What we do find is that there is an increase, increase, excuse me, of dwelling units, population, and school, which would all be consistent with the inclusion of new dwelling units. What we also found is that there is a reduction in water, sewer, solid waste, and trips, which would all be consistent with going from a more intensive use to a less intensive use, from commercial, professional, to the uses allowed in multi-family, even considering RMM, which is what this is based off of. We also analyzed the city impacts for fire and police, and found that for fire, the property is currently served by Fire Station Number Two. The future development is expected to generate less than 15 calls annually, and that there is a minor impact with no negative effects on fire service delivery for the immediate site or for the city. We also found for police that the property is served by Police Patrol Zone, Central District, Zone Four. The development is expected to generate less than 5% increase to recorded calls for service within Zone Four, and then 1% or less citywide, so very minimal increase. Also, future development is expected to have very minimal impact on police services. So, with all of this said, it is staff's recommendation that the future land use amendment from commercial, professional, to multi-family be approved. This was heard by by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended unanimous approval as well. To date, we have not received any correspondence in regards to this project, or this amendment. Excuse me. With that, I will stand by for any questions. Thank you.
I'll now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 9-23, please come forward.
Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurk was President of BGM Consulting here on behalf of the multiple owners of this property, who are also the applicants. Staff did an excellent job making the presentation. I think the only insight here that I can provide over and above what they did in their report was this was part of city centrum. When the city went back in a couple of years ago and wanted to change city centrum back to residential, the owners of these properties, the three on this road and the one to the south, were in the process of trying to build a professional office building and asked the city to let them out of that land use change, going back to multifamily. That project since fell through. They sold the property, and the owners of the three lots along 7th now want to make the change to go back to multifamily. I also would like to point out that it's 1.09 acres, and the zoning will be coming for us RMM, so we won't be building duplexes or single family homes on this property. With that, we respectfully request you approve this land use change.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this particular ordinance? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 9-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Ordinance 16-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 16-23, an ordinance providing for the release of permanent utility easements of a portion of Block 62A as more particularly described herein, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of said easement, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilmember Dawn Andrews with the Property Management Division. Ordinance 16-23 is requesting the release of existing utility easements located in a portion of Block 62A, which is located at 870 Southeast 47th Terrace. This is the location of the new project that's under construction known as The Cove at 47th. Over the years, the city has been granted utility easements for its facilities located in the vacated alley right-of-way within that block. The current property owner assembled all of the properties within Block 62A and has requested these utility easements be released in order to build The Cove at 47th Development. The property owner will replace the easements in other locations within the replat of Block 62A. The release of easements is to take effect subsequent to the construction of the relocated sewer system, being inspected and approved by the city, subsequent to the construction of the relocated sewer system, being inspected and approved by the city. It's been a long night. The release of the easement shall be recorded after city council approves the replat of the block and recorded prior to the recording of the plat, and I can stand by for questions.
I will now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 16-23, please come forward.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Steve Hartzell. I'm with Povista Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of Flaherty &amp; Collins, the developer of The Cove at 47th. We appreciate the work that Dawn Andrews, Dave Heide, and Brian Bartos have done to get us this far. We appreciate the cooperation of staff. We would ask that you approve the ordinance approving the release, as Dawn Andrews has explained it to you. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on the Ordinance 16-23? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 16-23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to Introductions 10B. We have Ordinance 6-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 6-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use per property described as lots 21 through 22 and lots 35 through 36, Block 4567, Cape Coral, Unit 68. Property located at 412 Skyline Boulevard and 413 Southwest 8th Place, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be March 1st, 2023.
Any council or staff discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 19-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 19-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 9 through 12, Block 4555, Cape Coral subdivision, Unit 68, from commercial to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 800 Southwest 8th Place and 817 Southwest 8th Street, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be March 1st, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 20-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 20-23, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as a plot or parcel of land lying in a portion of the southeast quarter of Section 10 Township 44 South, Range 23, Eastley County, Florida. Said plot or parcel being more particularly described herein, from commercial to neighborhood commercial zone. Property is located west of Nelson Road and south of Tropicana Parkway, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be March 1st, 2023.
Any council or staff discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 11, Reports. Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, so tomorrow's a big day for the Cape Coral Museum of History, and it may not be for what you think. It's called Heart Health Day. So from 9:00 to noon, they're having a family CPR class that will be conducted by the Cape Coral Fire Department. From 12:30 to 4:30, the Lee Health Blood Mobile will be there. And from 5:30 to 7:00, the museum will be open for an open house, so you can study history everywhere from the settlers, the early settlers in the area to the present day. So for our residents, if you want a day that promises to keep the blood flowing, this is for you. Thanks.
Councilmember Long?
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd?
No report.
Councilmember Steinke?
I have quite a bit went on over the last couple of weeks. I attended the CRA meeting, even though I am an alternate, in an attempt to stay in tune with CRA issues. I was present at the Waterway Advisory Board Meeting, where a couple interesting things came up. It came to the attention of the board that the Coast Guard hadn't received an update on the aids to navigation for mariners, those that had been destroyed or damaged in the hurricane. And so that list was making its way to the Coast Guard so that they could make that aids to navigation report to mariners. Safety steps for the lock, for making their way through the lock in darkness were brought up. So there were good things happened in the Waterway Advisory Board. I attended the Tourist Development Council, representing the city, made sure that they were understanding our need to continue to advertise for our merchants that are up and running in our city, in Cape Coral, and that we need to have, you know, the tourists continuing to come here, not thinking that we were closed for business, but instead very open for business, and to not hold back any advertising for Cape Coral. I had the opportunity, took the opportunity or privilege with City Attorney's Office to further a relationship that I opened at the Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting with our Government Affairs Representative from Waste Pro, and had a very promising meeting with him. And I would ask that whatever needs to be done, whether it be from staff or from City Attorney's Office, to arrange for some type of a shade meeting, that I would have the opportunity to share some of the things that went on during that time that I had with Ed Farmer. And I would like that to happen as quickly as any of us can make it possible. And that completes my report.
Okay. Councilmember Welsh, report.
No report.
Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, so I did attend a couple events as well. Was at the Fire Department Ceremony. It was absolutely amazing. Had a really great time, and it was an honor to receive a gift from the Fire Department, so I'll be putting that in my office soon. As well, I attended, I believe it was the Horizon Council put together the Business Award Program. A few of us here from council was there. That was amazing to watch and be part of. As well, I had talked to Lee, the farmer of Farmer Joe's, and I want to make something clear. The media had put out there that he had sold his company, and they did not sell. So Farmer Joe's is still in operation under the business owners. They just changed the names of the LLC. So I told him I would let the people know that Farmer Joe's is here and will remain. So other than that, it's been a great evening, and have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. I'll try to be pretty quick here. As a guest speaker at the Groundout Day Celebration, also met with our lobbyist, Dane Eagle, back on February 6th, talk about some of the state appropriation needs for our city. Also attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities Executive Committee Meeting, attended the CRA meeting as well, met with our state representative, Mike G. Libardo, to talk about some of our state appropriation needs, again, for this legislative session. Also filmed the Pet of the Month. I was also a speaker, one of the panelists, at the Cape Coral Commerce General Membership Luncheon. Also attended, like many of us, did the Fire Department Ceremony recognition, always a great event each and every year. Attended the Horizon Council Industry Appreciation Awards as well. One thing I wanted to mention also with council is I would like to call a special meeting for Friday, this Friday at 3:00 PM, so we can have a discussion on our city manager's position, who we will utilize as an interim city manager. We will have to vote on that. So I'd like to do that on Friday at 3:00 PM. We'll have that discussion. I wanted to make sure everyone could attend on that.
I'm unable to attend until 4:30.
Right.
I'll have to go virtual that I can do 4:30.
Or, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I prefer later in the day, if it's going to be a meeting specifically for that, because I have already committed to a planning and zoning meeting that morning, so it's already taking away from my daily work activities.
Okay.
So I can commit to something, like you said, maybe 4:00 PM or later.
All right. And you said 4:30, Councilmember Steinke?
Yes, please.
All right. Is 4:30 good with everybody else? How's it with you?
I don't know that I can make it in 4:30.
So what time's good for you? Okay, so you could make it at 4:30?
No, it's not too 4:30.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have MPO that morning, so at any point after that, till...
Yeah, I do know that, I was told that Council Chambers is not available until what time?
We currently have that special P&amp;Z meeting that has two cases, estimated noon could be over.
So about... Earlier, like 1:00?
1:00, okay with you.
Councilmember, I don't think it'll be that long a meeting, but Councilmember Welsh, you said you're going to the MPO, is that what I heard, or was it planning zoning?
No, since I'm the planning and zoning liaison, I'm not going to be able to attend MPO that morning. It'll be the planning and zoning meeting.
So would 1:00 work for you, right after the planning and zoning?
I'd like to say no. I would prefer maybe Monday we do this instead of Friday. I know...
We have to do it sooner than later, just because City Clerk said that we have documentation that needs to be signed by the city manager, and we have to appoint someone in that interim position.
Yeah, knowing that that is, I can...
And I don't think it's going to be that long of a discussion.
Do you think the MPO meeting will be done, and we can all be here in the time for that?
1:00?
At 1:00?
There's no votes being taken at the MPO meeting. It's just an update, so...
Right.
There's not a...
So I think that'll be a pretty quick meeting, so...
Yeah, if it's consensus of council, I'll make it happen.
Mayors, are any, I'm obligated from 12:00 to 4:00. Can anybody come together tomorrow?
Yeah, that was my next line. How's tomorrow?
I'm available from 3:30 on.
All right. 4:30 tomorrow?
Do we have to advertise this thing?
Yeah, I was gonna say, would you do it now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good with me.
I think I need 12 hours to have a meeting called.
Okay. So if we do 4:30 tomorrow, we're fine.
City Attorney has a comment, too.
It's better to have 24, because what they look at is what's reasonable under the circumstances. So if you have, you know, a major storm coming, reasonable might be a lesser period, but if you're talking more about...
You would prefer Friday, is what I hear.
I would prefer 24.
Okay. All right. So it sounds like it's going to be Friday.
So we're gonna do it 9:57 tomorrow? Sorry. Had a little levity. I just won't be able to make it between 12:00 and 4:00, that's all.
Everybody, Tom is questionable. Councilmember Hayden, Councilmember Long, can you make 4:30, or was that a no?
I cannot make 4:30 now.
Okay.
I have a suggestion.
We gotta figure out something here.
Can I suggest something?
Yes, ma'am.
What if we all skip the meetings that we have Friday morning and do in the conference room? I know we all have MPO, we have planning and zoning, but I think that's the only time we can all...
Well, we have to be careful, because is MPO gonna have a quorum then? But go ahead.
I had a suggestion of 8:00 AM?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 8:00.
On Friday?
Killing me smalls.
Yeah, Friday at 8:00 AM? Is that that? Friday at 8:00 AM?
Friday at 8:00 AM.
Yep. And then we can leave and go to MPO after that?
And then we'll need a quorum at MPO anyway.
Yeah, because they're not voting. Right. All right. So Friday at 8:00 AM? 8:00 AM? Okay.
Bring breakfast.
Madam City Clerk, could we make Friday at 8:00 AM? And we will meet in Conference 228? Or do we want to meet, because what time does planning zoning start? 9:00?
They start at 9:00, but if we're delayed, they could be delayed. It's not ideal, but it is a possibility. So the location is completely up to all of you.
Yeah, I think 228, which would be fine.
I can make that happen.
All right. Sounds good. So Friday, 8:00 AM, in Room 228. Councilmember Welsh, is your light on, or you...
That was from before.
Okay. All right. So that's all I have. And so we'll go to the reports for Madam City Attorney? Madam Assistant City Manager?
No report. I was just curious which dog you did the Dog of the Day with.
Oh, boy. You'd have to ask. I can't remember his name. He was a spunky little guy. I will say that.
Well, your first one was pretty interesting.
Yeah. But I think I'm, that was, what, my fourth Pet of the Month?
Is it four?
I'm three for three prior to that, so we'll... I'm three for three prior to that, so we'll see how, we'll see how it goes.
Thank you.
All righty then. Time and place of future meetings. We have a special meeting that will be, what's Friday's date?
17th.
17th, February 17th at 8:00 a.m. in Room 228, and we have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. in Council Chambers. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.